Call to order the Gladstone City Council Goal Setting Session 2123. It is 4:00 PM on January 22nd, 2021. I'm going to go ahead and just do a roll call. So, Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Great. It's all yours, John.
All right. Let's make this happen. Yeah, I've done this with many city councils. And this Friday night thing is always really great. I mean, we've done potlucks, we've gone to restaurants, you know, all these great things. And it's an environment that the council rarely gets into, where you basically sit together and hold a conversation instead of a deliberation or a debate. Ah, that's not going to work. A debate, you know, like you're so used to at council meetings. And it's always an enriching time for everyone to do that, especially if there's a little wine at the table or something. But, uh, so we've got to make do and just pretend we're kumbaya-ing around a, you know, a fire pit outside or something and do our best in a fairly non-intimate environment. So let's try our best with that. Hi, I'm John Morgan. I've talked with all of you. I'll just give you a little bit of background about me and then I'm going to ask each of you to do an introduction of yourself for me. A little more detail on maybe what we've talked about or maybe some other things. I'm John Morgan. I was born and raised in Lebanon, went to Willamette University, came out and immediately went to work as an urban planner for the city of Salem. And my career has stretched through planning and through city management now for a long time. Just put it that way. I think I'm almost senior in a lot of ways. I don't know. And I have this extreme passion for, uh, working with the communities in Oregon. And I'm lucky in that I get to work with so many and see so many diverse people in diverse settings. And it's just, it's a joy for me to be able to help groups such as yourself. I spent a lot of time teaching leadership in the public realm. Folks like you, your appointed people, your senior staff. You probably have seen Chinook Program flyers and stuff. Those of you that have been on council for a while, that's me. And I've learned an awful lot in that about what makes good leadership serving the public as opposed to good leadership serving a business or corporate purpose. And it's a different thing. It really is. And I, you know, we have to acknowledge that right here are the leaders of the community sitting in one room altogether. And that carries a tremendous responsibility to it in a variety of ways. We'll talk about all of that kind of stuff. But what's, uh, critical in so many ways is recognizing that, uh, the community looks up to you a lot and expects great things to come because they allow you or actually empower and ask you to do great things together. And that, that's the leadership that's critically important for us all to talk about and if it's working and if it isn't in a lot of ways. So that's, that's me. Love doing what I do. Let's go around and I'd love it if you'd just, you know, you've all met each other at least once at one council meeting. But introduce yourself and just two questions. One, what do you love, and I mean love, about Gladstone? And two, oh no, we'll come back. We'll come back to number two. You want to lead off?
Um, sure. So, I love, sorry, you guys, I'm really, we got bad family news today and it's really fragile. So I apologize for that. What I love about Gladstone is I love our parks. I love that people come together at them and I love that, um, that, that's all. I'm so sorry. That's all.
Okay.
Um, so I'm Matt Tracy. I think one of the things or the thing that I love the most about Gladstone is that it is a small town nestled in a metropolitan area. And it still has many of the charms and amenities of a small town. And having been raised in a small town that's now a much larger town, it's just nice to have kind of a respite from the rest of the metropolitan region.
Excellent. I was city manager of Sherwood for a few years, having moved up there from the Salem area for the position and was very much cognizant of that very same thing, being able to escape. On the other hand, I still found it extremely Portland. And, uh, and inconvenient. And when the opportunity came to flee back to the Salem area, I did, but I really understand and appreciate what you're saying.
Very good. Um, I think some of the things I like most about Gladstone has probably changed over the years. It used to really feel like home and community, but it's not quite been there lately. But what I really like about Gladstone is you're an hour and a half from the beach, you're an hour and a half from Mount Hood, you're 10 minutes from I-5, you're five minutes to 2:05. I can walk to Winchell's Dairy Queen. I can get, I can get a Subway sandwich, an ice cream bar and a donut within a three-minute walk of my house.
That's fabulous.
But the location for jumping on 2:05, you're automatically on freeway.
Yeah.
And you're midway between I-5 and Washington. You're midway to the beach and mountain. It's not like Beaverton where everything's crooked and you don't know what road you're on or you're coming out somewhere. Everything's in a nice straight line.
Yeah, providing as much traffic.
You have, it's good access to where you want to go.
I was community development director of Kaiser all through the 1990s. And we used to brag that we could get to the airport, Portland Airport, faster than someone in Hillsborough can get there. And, which was true. I mean, we're talking 15, 20 minutes faster given traffic and everything. And folks in Hillsborough didn't like hearing that. But it's that convenience.
Yeah.
That convenience is really, really an important thing. Cool. Vanessa?
Vanessa Harmon. I have to echo everything that everyone else just said. I also really like the sense of community, like for when we had the fires and for me personally, the parents and the school district's community is really tight-knit. If someone needs something, people are here to give you whatever it is that you need. So that has been really nice, having no family here. I feel like I have a sense of family with my neighbors, which is, which has really been great.
Nice.
And the parks, obviously, like the access to nature and the river and getting on your kayak and just going is kind of fantastic.
Are you familiar, any of you, with the survey that's taken every 10 years called the Oregon Values Survey? It's underwritten by the state and, uh, 9,000 people across the state take this survey once every 10 years. And it's compiled and it's, um, but it looks at what do people care about? And statewide in all the regions, the number one thing was access to the outdoors. Was the most important thing to the people of Oregon. And it's also the number one reason people move here. I appreciate what you're saying. Tracy?
Hi, Tracy Todd. Um, of course echo everything you would say. And I think I know what Randy was talking about. I mean, we've raised our children here. Our kids went to school together. And it's that sense of community and that multi-generational type families that you've had, where you have a lot of times grandparents, you know, down the street. And then you've got, you know, young families and such. And I think it's changing a little bit, but I think we're going through a regrowth that I love, where new young families are coming in and Gladstone is going to be their hometown. And I just, I'm passionate about this place. I mean, I live here because I want to, not just because I was hatched here and I can't leave. I love the schools. I love the potential for the schools. I just, I'm very passionate about this town. And I love sitting in my little office window and seeing my godparents walk by hand in hand. You know what I mean? And getting to wave or, you know, Bob and Tracy Huddleston and their dogs. And it's just, I just, I love that part of it, so.
Cool. Greg?
Greg Alexander. Yes, I, they got all the good answers. But I mean, I agree with them all. But I like all my neighbors. I've lived a few places and it's very rare you get to walk out and for as far as you can go down this way or that way, you've got good neighbors that you can talk to that you can disagree, you can agree, you can, but they talk. You converse. The relationships you've, I've built living in here in Gladstone for as long as I have, you know, you make friendships for life. And so that's what I enjoy about it.
Excellent.
I'm Cammy Stempel. Same as everybody else. I like the people, longevity, neighbors. I've had the same neighbors almost all the, for the whole 36 years, 37 years that I've been here, which is amazing. I love the parks and I love the rivers. And I wish that we would build on the rivers a little bit more. Not build physically, but embrace them and be a part of them.
Pretty unique place with two river fronts.
Yep.
That's pretty, pretty special and it's an opportunity, of course. Chad, you're not getting off the hook.
So Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. I don't have the pleasure of living here, but I'll tell you what strikes me the most about Gladstone is the passion of the community. And I think that's not just at the city council level, but you see it in the citizens as well. And having worked with multitudes of cities all across the state, this is easily one of the most passionate communities. And that's what really excites me about working with the city council here.
What do you mean passionate? What do you observe they're passionate about? They care?
They care. They care about the community. They care about what's going on. They participate. They have people who want to volunteer. They have different people who run for city council. I mean, Mindy I have worked with in different capacities on different boards and commissions. And now she's on the city council. It's not like someone puts in their five minutes and then leaves and doesn't do anymore. They, there's a commitment in Gladstone that you don't find in a lot of communities.
All right, Jackie.
Well, I love working in local government. I think local government is where you can see the real results. It's not about what Jackie wants for Gladstone. It's about what do the elected officials want? What do the citizens want? And how do I get our management as a team to make that happen? And I think Gladstone is a very special place. And it needs to be treated with care because for so many years, a lot of things didn't get done with our infrastructure, our buildings, the services we provided. And now we're kind of project orientated where we're seeing some real results. And I think that is special. I do think the people here are passionate about Gladstone and balancing that. But I love being that person that facilitates, what do the elected officials want? What do the citizens want? And how do we get our management to make that happen?
Excellent. Any questions of each other about that? That's, that's a heck of a list. I don't think you'd find one that's quite that rich in a lot of places. Chad, I imagine you would agree with that. You know, I've, oh, I've been doing a lot of work with Wes Lynn and eh-eh, not a chance. Not a chance. So this, this is really good. It always feels good. Always feels good. And I got to tell you that, I mean, I was here for a management team retreat, what, about a month ago or so? It was before Christmas. So first time coming into this building. I remember two years ago, leading this council in goal-setting. And we were in the old building and, and all the new buildings and everything were in the old building. It's so cool in two years to see the realization of this, this terrific, not just structure, but symbol for the community. It's really neat and I congratulate you greatly. And I love the new logo. So that's, uh, that's fabulous. That's fabulous. Okay, I'm going to ask you another question. And no, you don't have to go first.
I, I don't.
I'm going to start.
I've pulled myself together, I promise.
All right, all right, all right, right. Now, you know, okay, we all know silly icebreaker things and all that stuff, but I've got one. I'd like you to do it. And the reason is because I find it usually works out pretty well. And so I'm going to ask you this simple question. What's in your wallet? Meaning, I am asking you to find something in your wallet or your purse that says something about you that's significant, just an item, says something about you that's significant to you or that people should know about you, that, that you're willing to share and hopefully you're willing to share about anything in here. But just something in there of interest and especially if it's something other people may not know, which is probably going to be hard in this town.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah.
This town, come on.
I'm ready.
That's funny because I just, I just heard about Randy's expensive wallet.
I'm ready.
Did you see the handbag that Ivanka left the White House with? Seventy-five thousand dollars. Anyway.
Okay, so you're starting with Chad.
Oh, no, he's staff. Oh, you want to, nah, sure, Chad, you go first. Give Tommy time, how many times, time to find something.
All right. So I don't have much in my wallet, but I will show my, my 107th member card, which is like the Timbers Army card. One of the things I love is, uh, is sports and, uh, being, I don't know if you guys go to the Timbers matches, but it's a sort of a community in the Timbers Army. It's open seating. You don't have assigned seats and you get to meet all a bunch of different people. And they have this organization where they actually do volunteer activities and all sorts of things. And so it's been a pleasure to be a part of that organization and bring a sense of community and then bring my kids into that and taking them to those matches and them getting to meet people and have their friends there. It's, it's been a great experience to really help make Portland, which is a large city, a little smaller and a little more community oriented.
Nice. Jackie, I'm not letting you off the hook before this is over. But we'll come, unless you have something ready to think about.
I, I do, but I don't have my wallet with me. But if you opened my wallet and you went to the change, you would see two tokens to Red Tail Golf Course because I've been trying to learn how to golf for three years now and I have those in there. And one time I think I tried to spend them as quarters. But that's, that's a new hobby that I've been trying outside of work to bring that work-life balance. So I knew I have two tokens in my wallet right now.
And how are you doing on work-life balance?
Hope we get to talk about that today.
There we go.
Is there such a thing?
Amy?
My zoo membership. I'm a zoo fanatic. I'm addicted to elephants. And my bucket list goal as soon as COVID lifts is to go volunteer at the David Sheldrith Elephant Rhyo Sanctuary in Africa. For two weeks, I already have it all planned out. I just need COVID to go away.
Where is that?
Kenya.
Cool.
Yep.
Nice. I'm sure it's in between council meetings.
Yeah, two weeks, I'll be gone.
All right. Greg, surprise us.
Yeah, I don't surprise it. Well, I'm probably not surprised I played the Oregon lottery. I have my ticket in my wallet.
I don't.
Is that for tomorrow's draw?
Yeah.
Oh, well, good. Supplement the city budget.
It was a free ticket off the last one, so.
A winner. Tracy?
I have my Global Entry card because I like not having to wait in line. And, um, I love to travel. It's something that I have really missed this year. It's been difficult, having a child who lives, I don't know, 7,000 miles away or whatever it is. But I'm ready to go anytime. I, I love travel tips. I want to write a blog on how to get like the cheapest airfare, how to travel in a backpack, because that's all I do for like three weeks at a time. So that's, that'll be my next thing today.
I've never heard of a Global Entry card before.
Oh, yeah. I had to go to Seattle and be interviewed and have my retina taken a picture of and fingerprinted and all of that. So you don't ever have to go through any of this stuff.
Wow.
Jeremy, you don't have to go through it.
Really? No, no.
Pass that whole line up.
Yeah.
You just flash that and go away. Wow.
But you get interviewed. It's quite a thing.
Sounds like it's worth it.
Yeah.
Better than that TSA pre-check.
Yeah, no, this is the good one. This is throughout the world, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't have a wallet. I have everything in here. So it's probably not the safest thing. So whatever's in here, but I carry around a bundle of sage. Most of you know I'm native. So there's my, um, for me, it just reminds me to be grounded and calm in my conversations and protects me from negativity.
At Chinook Program and Pacific Program, which I've led for many years, we do a, a native component and we always smudge the room, which is burning the sage and smudging the room. And once we had the fire sprinklers go off. And, uh, but more often than not, people rush in because they think we're smoking weed in there, you know? Yeah, yeah. But it's worth it. Spirits go away, bad ones. Yep.
Absolutely.
All right.
So that's, that's, everything I try to do is with the least amount of stuff I can. This is actually, it said organic asparagus on it, but that wore off. But I got some more, so when it breaks, they last about four or five months. You got everything you need. You don't lose it. You don't have garbage in it. There's no receipts. There's no nothing.
Wow.
Yeah. They're free, too. You get a thing of asparagus and you got a wallet.
Nice.
Wow, minimalist. That's cool. Matt?
I have nothing remarkable in a wallet. Don't be blunt with me. So there's not anything that really, I mean, cards, right? So that's, that's what I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Pictures of kids, hunting license.
No, I have, like Greg, I have a few lottery tickets.
There we go. All right.
That's it.
Wow, you are dull and boring.
I like granny's wallet.
Yeah, go for that. Yeah, that would fit just right.
Yeah, there's not a lot in there. Certainly no money.
Mindy?
So interestingly enough, I have a new wallet because I was trying to be a little bit more streamlined. But after talking to Randy as we came in, I thought, okay, I clearly am not that. But I do have this card. It's an old Buy Mart card. It's missing the top. And, um, my friend Kathy and I bought these together when we worked at Pendleton Woolen Mills years and years and years ago together. And that was just a really good time in my life because that's when we had moved back to Portland after being in the service for 12 years. And, uh, we bought our house and all of that. And even, you know, quite shortly thereafter, I left that job to go work with my sisters. And I've been with my sisters now for 28 years. But this Buy Mart card is that little tiny piece of my life.
There you go. I've said to a number of communities, small towns, when we're doing economic development work and stuff, that what you really want is a Buy Mart. And they all go, ah, what? And I said, no, the reality is it's hard for your businesses to survive as they are because every, well, for instance, Estacada, you know, it's 12 miles to the Sandy Fred Meyer. And so, you know, no one was buying in town. Like I was saying, you need to get a Buy Mart. And they resisted it. And finally, they did get a Buy Mart. And that means people can stay in town to shop. And they're not leaving town and therefore it's helping. Now we see Dollar General, which is not quite as good, doing that in a lot of small communities. But Buy Mart's pretty special. I carry my old green one around as well. Super, super. Anybody think of anything else you want to share? Jackie, oh, you already did yours, didn't you? Okay. I'll tell you, the most interesting one I had in doing this, and this was quite a few years ago. There was this guy in the group who, I hate to stereotype, but looked like a stereotypical accountant or bookkeeper type, okay? And a little shriveled bald head, which is nothing wrong with that. And the, uh, and, and he was. He was an accountant. And he, we go around the room and he pulls out and shares his J.C. Penney bra and panty club cards. Okay, what? And it turns out his office was across the street from Penny's and he did the shopping for the family. So he, and I go, you really go over and pick that stuff out? You know, something, but yeah. No one's topped that one yet. Every time I do this, I'm hoping someone will come up with something a little more outrageous than that. A little more outrageous than that. Okay. Super. Well, let's figure out what we're going to do the next time together this evening, now and through this evening and then tomorrow. The, you know, this stems from the idea of council goal-setting, which communities do, councils do all the time because they want to establish the most important things to do in the next couple of years. And I want you to think of that. We're going to spend a lot more time on that tomorrow and I'll walk through more of what that means. But it, it is a time for real creativity and coming together and prioritizing that, which is most important, and also being very mindful of the resources it takes to do things. So everything we talk about, there has to be some sense of resource constraint about it. That's why priorities are so important in terms of making that work. And we'll get into a lot of detail on that tomorrow and yet maybe even later this evening, we'll, we'll see how it goes. We're good until, you said 11 or 12 tonight? Okay. So, um, what's the intent? Be done by eight?
Uh, six.
Six? Wait, wait, dinner's coming in.
I'm kidding.
Yes. No, I think you'll want to talk longer. We'll see. Of course, the purpose of getting together this evening is that council team building, thinking about that and, and having conversations about that and trying to see, you know, what problems may exist, how they might be resolved, your agreements with each other and trying to work things out. But before we get into that, I want to ask you a very simple question. To you as the council, here's the question. What is your job? What is your job?
Protect the longevity of the city?
Make decisions.
Wait a minute.
Listen to the people.
Protect the longevity is a characteristic of, it's the outcome you want to achieve.
Yes.
And you say, what?
Listen to the people.
And that's how you go about doing your job. And you said, which is the right answer, and nobody ever gets that this fast.
Well, John, we do it after three or four or five times of going through the exercise.
Yeah.
It becomes obvious.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you understand what Matt's saying. The thing is, you know, there's seven of you elected by the people in this community to make decisions. That's your job. That's your fundamental job. These other two things, and we didn't get a long, rich list, but I think you can think of a lot of things, are the characteristics of the job, the outcomes you're trying to achieve, the qualities that go into it, the framework for thinking and all. But your bottom line job is to make decisions. Because the community doesn't make those decisions. They elect you and empower you to make decisions. That's it. You have no other job. You got a lot of stuff. There's a lot of leadership characters, all kinds of things. But your number one reason for existence is to make decisions. Does that make some sense? You disagree? All right, now, given that, there are three characteristics of that that we need to talk about. It's, wanna see us make decisions that are, whoops, that are, close. Three different things. The first is good. Now, you gave a couple of examples of things that would define a good decision. But what else? What do you think goes into a good decision?
Fair.
Wait, okay, sorry?
Homework.
Homework, meaning being prepared? Okay?
Care.
Care?
Fair.
Tear?
Fair.
Oh, fair? Take the mask off them. Geez. Fear and tear. Whoa. Yeah, okay.
Knowledge.
Knowledge, which is, I mean, yeah, yeah, and it's understanding. What else might go into a good decision?
Defensible.
Okay, very good. Other ideas? Of what would go into it? Very good. The next category, thank you very much, is defensible. I can never spell it. It's a-b-o-l.
I can spell it.
I do.
Yeah, really. Why did you say that?
Tracy did.
Oh, you said it. Tracy, why didn't you say it?
I say it every meeting, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she does say it every meeting, though I think it's, I mean, whether it, being a good decision or a bad decision, I think that that's more subjective. You need to be able to say why that decision was made and why you did that. And you better have a pretty clear reason because someone's gonna ask.
Great. Great. No, that is a huge component, that defensibility of the decisions that you make. There's another quality of defensible that comes to mind. What might that be? Chad?
Legal.
Hey! Legal, legal. I mean, you work within a framework of law that's defined in a lot of ways. There's federal, state, and your own ordinances. You work within a tremendous legal framework, and you're held accountable for those decisions that you make. And legality could come into play in a lot of ways. It could be personnel stuff, it's state budget law, a variety of things. Probably, cities suffer more from land use law in terms of adherence to applicable law and making your decisions defensible. Which in the case of land use law, sometimes it's not the popular decision. And that applies to maybe a lot of these things. You have any thoughts about that in terms of defensibility? Have you had to defend this group a million times in front of Luba and the Circuit Court or anything?
These guys never make a mistake.
There you go. That's because you're here. Yeah, yeah. No, no, defensible, that's a huge, huge component of the work you do. But the quality of defensibility that I think is most important is your decisions I can't really spell, have to be credible. I guess I wasn't very credible. So the, the credibility, what do I mean by that? Can anyone say?
Credible by us or?
The decision, you want to make decisions that are credible. What do you think?
It almost goes with defensible, that you can back it up.
Which relates to what you said. It's that the next day, you're in a position, when you've made some decision that the public may question, that you can explain it at the post office or the grocery store. And you could say why you did what you did and help educate people in that process. That's a big part of credibility. But I want to suggest that credibility goes beyond that. And that credibility is so critically important to you because it also is the degree of trust by the people of your community, the degree of support, the degree of goodwill, the degree of respect that you engender under yourselves. And if you're not credible as a governing body, then it creates chaos in a number of ways. You'll never get a bond issue passed. You'll get resistance, all kinds of stuff. Frankly, recall elections, which we know this town has suffered a number. And, you know, those things are symptomatic of a lack of credibility in the institution of City Hall. And I would suggest to you that credibility comes from a consistent pattern of making good and defensible decisions. A consistent pattern over time. You can't declare yourself to be credible. It's something you earn from an outsider's perspective. In order to be credible, you have to make good decisions that are defensible all the time. The other part of credibility, which we have to talk about, is your public posture, how people see you. And we talked about that a little bit. But a situation where a City Hall, it's evident to the public that these kind of things aren't being done, and there's squabbling and things like that that are going on, it looks bad and it wrecks the credibility. You know, it's like, city government, it's, you know, corrupt and stupid, and I don't care, and I don't want to be part of it or support it or that kind of thing. And that comes home to roost. What is probably, I think, what, okay, I'm gonna tell you a story. Just came to mind. What's in my wallet is a, is my membership card for the Professional Ski Instructors of America. I've been a ski instructor for 40-plus years. And the, I remember, a number of years back, I was on the streets of Salem in the summer, walking with my wife, and this girl, who was maybe 12 years old, comes running up the sidewalk and pulling her mommy's hand and said, mommy, mammy, look, it's my ski instructor. It's my ski instructor. Ooh, she's jumping up and down and all of this. That's pretty cool. I didn't know her from Adam, you know? Because I had seen so many kids over the years and all of that stuff, that I didn't know her. I didn't recognize her. But I was nice and cordial and said, good to see you. How you doing? Good, all this kind of stuff. But it was a huge lesson for me in that notion of one-to-many and many-to-one. In that her relationship to me was one-to-one. I was her only ski instructor, and I'm the one that created some positive value for her, and she thoroughly enjoyed it, and for her family. It was a one-to-one relationship, extremely important. For me, it was just one in a thousand. And I, boy, it really struck me, no, I have to view this as that one-to-one relationship all the time. It's something that's very powerful for you. I talk in teaching my planning class about the Oregon Planning System, I talk about, we talk a lot about graciousness, which I think is a really important way as a council to think about things in terms of how you set the table, if you will, for the citizens and behave and have graciousness in the operations of the council and the planning commission and everybody. But, you know, the situation where a, it's a cold, wet, and stormy night, and there is a land use hearing that's on the council agenda, our planning commission agenda, somewhat controversial perhaps, nasty night, ma and pa are homes, lazy boys, it's the voice finals, and, but they're keenly interested in this land use case. It's next door, whatever it might be. So they leave the comfort of home, come to City Hall for that hearing. And when you stop and think about it, how often do people like that come to City Hall? A good chance, never. You know, maybe they show up to set up their water account, but everything's, you know, automatic pay and all that stuff. They don't come down here. So they have risked coming to City Hall, and it's an extremely scary thing for them, but they care so much that they face that risk, and they come here to participate in that hearing. They have no idea of what to do. They're not sure where to go. They don't know how to behave. They don't know what's expected of them or what they can do. They don't know how the hearing process works or any of this stuff. And it can make or break their lifetime relationship by how they're treated, by the mayor as the presiding officer, by the staff, by all of you, in terms of how they're treated, so that they're treated with respect, but also to help them get over their fears to where they trust what's going on. You know, they're being asked to stand up in front of a crowd, which we know is like everyone's worst fear is public speaking. And they're asked to stand up and share something, and it is a terrifying experience for them. I've seen this a thousand times. And how they see you behave in a time like that is how they see City Hall forever. So it's important, and it's not even where people actually have to come here. It's what they see on TV or streaming or whatever it might be. It's what they hear from their friends and neighbors. And those ill feelings can just spread like crazy. And I'll be the first one to say, you know, I watched a couple of council meetings from the past, and I watched the most recent one. I was very impressed with the passion of moving through the agenda, caring about the issues, how well the meeting was run by the mayor, how you all jumped in, smiled, supporting, and all that stuff. There were a couple of zingers that were thrown out at that meeting. And I'll bet for people watching it, those zingers very well may have been all they remember about that meeting. And it very well may not have served Gladstone well. And I know those were incidents, but from what I hear is that kind of thing happens pretty often. And I'm hoping that we can get on the table today some thoughts about this and some ideas and to figure out some strategy for you, to which you might agree, on how you can work in a way that serves really well for the citizen of Gladstone because you're such a great team working together. I'm not asking you to jump in right now. I want to give you something to, before we start. But let me just set the table with that. I don't think any of you are surprised. Here, let's pass these around. This is a document that I started compiling over 10 years ago. I do. I have plenty. Okay. And? One more? One more. There we go.
One more.
All right.
Thank you.
I started compiling this over 10 years ago. I kind of started it with my own thoughts, which are still the foundation of how it lays out. But I needed, especially since I was teaching this stuff, to come up with some framework of thinking of what is it we're trying to accomplish in government? You know, we know corporate, it's stockholder value and blah, 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 a lot of stuff. It's all different in government, in terms of what you're creating, the value that you create. So I started building this, and then I've talked to lots of city councils over the years and others, and have added to it and refined it somewhat. But to me, I see this as somewhat of an ideal, and I commend it to you. Just, you know, let's just take a look at it real quickly here. And I'd love to hear any feedback you may have about it. But it says, "Ideal government is responsive," which was part of what you talked about in terms of good decisions. Responsible, to be accountable, all that stuff. Strategic, which is why we're here today. Proactive, which, given the agenda of this city with building facilities and a lot of things, and what I hear from you about the projects that you want to think about, yeah, you're being greatly proactive. Nimbley adaptable, which is an interesting one because generally, government isn't in terms of the capability to respond, but still, it's something to be mindful of, that capability to pivot when need be to deal with a situation that's in hand. And what's great with good strategic thinking, that makes that easier. Innovative, efficient, effective, accessible, trusted and credible, and respected. There's that trusted and credible word again. And, you know, my sense is that if this was everything from the Soil and Water Conservation District to the federal government, and it all ran like this, or was like this, we'd all be in a better place. But where great things can happen, I believe, is at City Hall and local government. So hopefully, we can get there. So this is what I see as ideal government, but reflected in three ways. The first is structure, meaning literally budget, org chart, departments, systems, that structure of the government, which is what gets in the way, especially at the state level, with that idea of being nimbley adaptable, because it's really hard to turn a ship sometimes. But in City Hall, it's easier, but it's something to be mindful of. Actions, meaning what you do, both in terms of making decisions, your actions out in the community, your position and your talk as an individual counselor, and more especially, what you do as a group, the actions that you take, and then the behavior. That one is kind of what I think some of the focus needs to be today in terms of thinking about behavior. That's kind of a weird word. I'm not talking about, you know, bad kid, go sit in the corner. But I am talking about that which diminishes your capability to respect and work together, and that which tarnishes your image with the public. Behavior. We need to spend some time talking about that. And then it goes on to say, "Within a framework of clear purpose, goals, and strategy." That's the foundation of the work we're gonna do in the next couple of days. Effective decision-making, which we've talked about, astute financial management. Ah, thank yous, bad at city manager. Continual and intentional learning, which is something that local government misses a lot in terms of that idea of being intentional about learning. But still, we're here today to learn. And that learn is gonna be in a number of ways, including from each other, and also learning as a group about how best to approach the future in your role as leaders of Gladstone. Proactively growing and supporting new leadership. You know, there's city councils out there that have an average age of like 69. And, you know, and they've all been on the council for 30 years kind of thing. Stagnant, stagnant, and they're all old white guys. Been working with Woodburn, and, you know, which is 39% white. It's the most diverse community in the state of Oregon. And it's not just Latino. I mean, there's a huge Russian population, Southeast Asian population, a lot of other things. And their council was old white guys. Their planning commission was old white guys. And, you know, I'm just going, you can't do this, you know, all this stuff. But they had to take, they had to learn from that and realize it didn't work for that community. And so they intentionally learned and intentionally changed how they approached it. And now, they have much more diversity in their leadership structure in the community because it was an intentional action by the council to attract that, train it, empower it, encourage it, and make it happen. That's really important, and that's growing the new leadership that you need. And then positive and productive relationships. I mean, the bottom line of everything we do, I mean, you could take every council agenda item, and it probably, its foundation has something to do with relationships, one way or the other. And we have to be mindful of that, very mindful that it's all about relationships. So here's some ideas for things that might reflect, or you would hope would be, positive and productive relationships. Internal teams elected and employed. And that means the elected body, the staff, and you working together as one team. And I'm concerned about the positive and productive part of that. We've got to talk about that. Positive and productive relationships with your customers, with your citizens, those that are participating in governance, where they are approaching you to offer something of great value, which is their time, their ideas, and all of that stuff. And then how do you respond to that? The partners, private and all levels and types of public, meaning you're not an island unto your own. There's little you can do by yourself as city government. You've got to have a relationship with all the special districts, especially maybe the school district, certainly the county, metro, whatever. But having those relationships, it says here, private, I mean, the relationship to the business community, relationship to your major manufacturing base, which you don't really have. But, you know, those things that are not adversarial, but rather complementary with each other. And then the bottom one, which really became evident to me probably, you know, seven, eight years ago. It wasn't on the list originally, but I thought it was really powerful. In fact, it was a city counselor who said something like this and started the discussion. Those of differing positions and discordant voices. Positive and productive relationships with those of differing positions and discordant voices. Meaning it ain't always gonna be, you know, rainbows and unicorns. It can't be, because people come at this with so many interests and perspectives and all. Some people will be discordant, meaning that they may be almost offensive at council, you know? Someone comes up and talks to you and yells and screams, or whatever it might be. And then differing positions. It's okay. And for ideal government to work, those relationships with people of differing positions and discordant voices are critically important to have positive and productive relationships. I just can't say enough about that because it ain't going away. You know, my attorney blew me away. I go in there, one of the very first times I met him, and he's got a sign over the back of his desk, up on the wall. And, you know, and this is a general practice attorney. So, you know, talking with him about wills, deeds, and weird stuff. So, but the sign says, "Life's not fair and people are stupid." And he said, 90% of the time, when people come in to him and they're pounding on the table, he points at the sign. Says, "You don't have a legal case. You know, it's just not there." Because you need to understand, life's not fair and people are stupid. And it ain't going away. So that kind of fits into this idea of differing positions, discordant voices, and being tolerant of stupid people, perhaps, that kind of thing. I'm just thinking, what else here? Jackie, long esteemed experience in local government. Certified manager, ICMA whiz bang. What do you, what do you think about all this? Can you reflect on this in some way and share what you know and?
Well, I read through this different lens than what the elected officials do. I'm like, are we doing this? Are we doing this? How do we with this? And I think that as a city council, you're correct. I think that the positive and productive relationships piece is the one that I would really like to be focused on. And how do we get to that point where differing? And how do we get to that point where differing positions are okay and being tolerant of that? That is one of the outcomes that I'm hoping for as the city manager here.
Excellent, excellent. The other story, I tell too many stories, but I've been out there too long seeing this stuff happen. In terms of that idea of differing positions, I was working with the city council a number of years back from St. Helens, where I was doing an organizational audit of the whole thing. We were looking at charter changes, all kinds of stuff. And I, I, I read through a whole bunch of council minutes and everything was five zero. It was a five-person council. Everything was five zero on everything. And I, you know, I questioned that, "Why, why is that?" I'm talking to the mayor and everyone, the city manager, "Why, why?" And they say, and what came out is what they valued more than anything was consensus. And they hated conflict, so they would do whatever it took to get to consensus and be able to get five zero votes. And I ended up standing in front of the council because consultants can say wild and crazy things and hopefully not get killed. But I said, "The problem with that is you've become profoundly mediocre because you never push out. You never push out. Everything's just to keep, keep, keep from the conflict. We work for consensus." And, and you've got to break away from that and understand differing, differing positions, differing voices are critically important. And, and it's, I mean, if you get a five zero or a seven zero vote, that's great. But a three-two vote's great too. It just, it means moving forward, pushing the envelope and getting things done. Consensus isn't the bottom line and you've got to embrace the, the wisdom and opportunity that conflicting positions create for you. That's part of being the great team is making sure that stuff gets on the table, talking about it, sorting it out as a group and voting on it. Critically important to do that. Chad, you work with a lot of cities. Do you have any perspective on any of this?
Yeah, sure. You know, I think I've said this to a few of you, but you know, in my experience, I've been doing this 20 some years now, which is kind of scary. But the one thing that you will continually find is when you have that intolerance and you have a lack of being able to work with differing positions is a situation where the city's work gets derailed. And the reason that is, is because it takes an inordinate amount of staff time and likewise an inordinate amount of your legal budget to deal with these issues of people infighting on the council. And then that takes away the ability of staff to do all those critical things that you want them to do and that the community wants them to do. And for me, what I always tell people is, especially at the local government level, you're not in this for power, you're not in this for money, you're volunteers. You're in this because you care about the community. And that's, I'm imagining why every single one of you is here and that's why pretty much every council I work with, why they're there. And you can have differing points of view and you can feel strongly and passionately about a particular topic. But if you start with the foundation and always keep in mind that that person who you're disagreeing with is there as a volunteer because they care about this community as much as you do and that's why they're here, that provides you with some common ground to understand each other. And that common ground allows you then to work through those issues. And I, you know, I just encourage you all to always keep that in the back of your mind because if you can't work together and you have a lot of discord, it just hurts the community as a whole and it defeats the very purpose of why you're here. And it does that, like I said, because it takes away from staff's ability to do their job and the job that you want them to do and the job that the community wants them to do. And so working through that and understanding that, to me, has always been the thing that allows people to sort of heal that process a little bit. And I would hope that, you know, you all can maybe begin to do that as well because I do think, you know, from my perspective and working with a lot of different cities for a lot of years now, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on in Gladstone right now. There's a lot of very positive things going on and you, you don't want infighting to get in the way of that. You, you want to step back and let, you know, these things thrive because, you know, it's a great legacy for you to have for your volunteer work and it's great, you know, for the, the generations that you're talking about and these young families and everything else for them to be able to say, "Look where this community started and look where we're at today." And just in my short time working with you all, there's a lot that's been done. And, you know, your staff has been doing an amazing job and providing them the support that they need to keep doing that and giving them direction about where you want those goals focused is what you can do to make this community and continue to make this community an amazing place and even more amazing place. And that's sort of like the passion, when I talked about the passion and why that really impresses me, it's, it's figuring out how to corral that passion in a positive way instead of a negative way. And, you know, hopefully if you always keep in the back of the mind that you're all here for the same reason, fundamentally at the foundational level, you're all here for the same reason, you can work towards that together. And that's sort of, you know, my words, pearls of wisdom that I can share, I guess.
No, that's absolutely perfect. It, it's that sense of looking at that list of all the things that you love about Gladstone. That means you love them today, but I bet every one of you wants to still love them tomorrow and 10 years from now and you want your kids to love them and you want them even to be bigger and better. I mean, I think every one of you mentioned the role of parks when I talked to you on the phone and downtown and a lot of stuff. And, and the sense is your work together as the council is either going to stand in the way, as Chad said, or it's going to move it forward. We all are rooting for the federal government to become united, be nonpartisan, and why can't they just get along and maybe now there's a chance to do so? Well, that's writ large and you're writ small with this very same thing, finding some way to get there. And there's a, and, and I think we need, a big thing we get done with tomorrow is all looking at, "Wow, this is the stuff that we are going to do and we're going to do what we need to do to get it done." Okay? So let's, I, I'm going to ask you another question a little bit, but first let me ask you this. Individually, just looking at this list and thinking of it as a benchmark, what do you think? How are you doing as a community on these things? Have you looked at it as a checklist? Yeah?
I just have one thing I don't, I don't see on there.
Yeah.
That if you go back to any relationship, the only way a relationship can work is communication. So if we don't get to talk or sit around like this, maybe come in and do this, you know, then, and then we get to a council meeting and, and there's something, "I don't agree" or "I don't agree" or "I don't," you know, and there's some infighting and what's that, what's the perception to the community about us?
Well, you are communicating.
Because we didn't, well, we're communicating there in front of everybody.
Yeah.
What's wrong with doing something like this and maybe trying to get it to a consensus to make us look a little, a little more like squared away at the meeting?
Yeah, you definitely are communicating when you, it's communicating some negativity. And, and one of the tough things, I mean, if, if this was a corporation, we'd be off in some, you know, retreat center for three days and drinking heavily and doing whatever we want in a lot of ways. But the, not that I drink heavily, might do, but, but you have to do your work in the public eye. I, I remember the, a mayor of Salem was president of the chamber and then he was elected mayor and I remember sitting with him in his office and, and he, he decided he couldn't stand it because he said the glass house. He just didn't know how to operate when everything was in a glass house. But that's what we expect of government is that it's all up front and open. And unfortunately, it, it's really difficult within the open meetings law to do that. So finding ways to, I want to get around that, but to be effective in that way is something we've, we've got to figure out how that's going to work for you.
Oh, please tell me how you're going to do that.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see. But I wrote communication down. I actually was thinking of amending my list with something like that before I came, but I'm not surprised it came up because it's, it's not on here. Effective, positive internal and external communication or something like that. Anybody else, any thoughts about this?
I'm, I would have to say I'm a little bit with Greg. That was kind of a, so on the parks board, when I was on the parks board or any other thing that I ever did, every once in a while, you know, there was side, not side communication, I wouldn't even call it that, but you know, you run into somebody at the store or I work with a group at the park and so we're, you know, working at the park or when we're together, you know, we would talk about things. And I'm not saying those boards aren't important, but they're not as, as top government so far as Gladstone goes as this is. So after our last meeting, I thought to myself, "Okay, I'm not sure how we're supposed to go about this whole conversation thing because I'm just not sure how this is supposed to work." And, and honestly, I'm looking for some insight because I don't, you know.
Yeah.
I love throwing ideas out there, hashing them out and then coming back. That is clearly not this. So I have had a, a little bit, and that, that's really, for me not to actually see that because I've been coming to city council meetings for 20 years when I was the only person in the audience month after month after month. And you just talk to them because you were the only people in the room. You talked about really boring things. But now there's so many people and you don't get that conversation, that real conversation. And I'm not sure how, how that's supposed to work. I, I truly, truly am at a loss there.
You're absolutely right. You're incredibly perceptive. You do the three Ds, which is discussion, dialogue, and debate. And that's all you legally can do in the open council meetings. There isn't an opportunity for conversation and conversation's different because it comes as much from here as from here. Your others are, you know, here, much more so than what you do. So finding a way in which you legally, I keep stressing that because the open meetings law can have an opportunity to have open and honest conversation once in a while with each other is, is pretty important. Councils do it different ways. They'll, they'll do work sessions where the agenda's so boring, no one shows up and they can have more of a conversation. Or two or three times a year, they get together at a time like this, which is still a public meeting, but have a time like this in which they can have more deliberate conversation. It's just, you know, it, it's, it, you, you figure out if that's value to you and if that's something you'd want to think about where you go. But, okay, what, what else on here might be? How would you evaluate yourself? Where's, where's the great strengths in this and maybe places of weakness? Other ideas of things that might get added on?
I'd like to add, I mean, I saw under your ideal government would be trusted and credible. And I think that you were thinking of that or maybe how I saw it first was how we're viewed by our community. But I also believe we can disagree with each other. But if I don't trust you, then I'm not going to work with you.
Yeah.
And that's a problem. I, I, I feel like there's sometimes a huge lack of trust because you don't get to talk to people in advance and grenades get thrown. And that's really hard to, if you can't trust, then we look like cuckoos when we're sitting on the dais because there's grenades thrown. So I think having trust not only amongst the community, but trust that we can disagree with each other policy-wise, whatever, but that we will intentionally not hurt each other. You know what I mean? That we're together in some form.
Yeah.
I don't know. Does that make sense?
Let me just be frank about this and just say, watching the council meeting, you call them grenades, I'll call them zingers, it's not quite as tough. And I don't want to go into the details of what happened, but I think every one of those, had there been pre-conversations with the right people, it would have never aired out in the public eye. And I don't think that's appropriate. It, it would have been real easy to talk one-on-one as counselors to get to the bottom line about something. Would have been easy to call Jackie and, and filter through her a question or whatever. And those issues that were raised probably would have never come out and the people would have walked away much happier than they walked away from that meeting and satisfied with the answers. Greg?
But also when you, when you don't get a chance to talk like this, if I'm just talking to Matt, Matt's always been open every time I've called him, he'll listen, okay? But now that you're counselors, if you don't, if you can't sit and talk like this, maybe I'm just talking to Matt about an issue, well, I'm missing out on one, two, three, four, five other ideas that might be better than Matt's or I's.
Yeah.
So how do we know which one, how do you, how do you navigate which one you want to go with and how do you let the other people know which idea works best for the community?
That's why you meet as a group. You know, that's where you come back. And if you're, if you're stifled by formal council meetings, then having more work sessions to discuss this stuff might be in order. But, but you can't meet behind closed doors. We just, not only is that the law, but that's what the citizens expect of you.
And you can't have those rolling quorums as well.
Oh, yeah.
Where it's like, "Well, I've talked to you and then..."
You call Greg and I'll call Tammy, you know? No.
We'll all be down and say...
Yeah, that was the, the case out of Lane County. God, what was that? Yeah, where the...
A mobile home in a park.
Yeah. And the county commissioners held a rolling meeting via email and got called on it. And one thing about an ethics violation like that is the city will not defend you. That's personal and each of those counselors paid a $20,000 fine for that rolling meeting. And so, yeah, it's kind of unfortunate because you're hamstrung because of what society expects of you as the government to be open and fair and transparent and all of that. And yet sometimes it's hard to have the heartfelt conversation. Finding ways through that, I can't give you, you know, a checklist, but certainly it's something to be mindful of and think about ways that might work within the, the realm of our open meetings law.
This is a real big thing for me. It really is. I feel like, I, I don't want anyone to think that I'm not willing to communicate. I don't want anyone to think that I'm not up for the conversation. I want to be in the conversation, but it's, it's, it's not really easy for me to do that, you know, on a Zoom meeting or that kind of thing. At our council meeting, I said to Randy, "I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying." But that's probably because I wasn't coming across correctly. So I, I own, I own that completely, 100%.
I think we're both some of the different branches of state.
I think, and that could be, but see, that's where I think sometimes when you're having that conversation in that moment, I feel like we, when we're having, I didn't even, I wouldn't even call that a conversation. When we're each stating our opinion in that moment, we haven't had that conversation and been able to have that thought process beforehand. And that's what I want, I want to figure out how to do that so that I don't have those moments.
Well, the other problem with the Zoom meetings is you can't see body language and everything else that, that the majority of our communication isn't with our words, it's with body language and our gestures and everything else.
Yeah.
And on Zoom and with masks, we don't get to see all that kind of stuff.
I'm so glad we're here tonight because I've done two council retreats this year by Zoom. Not good. Yeah, that, that was discussion, it wasn't conversation, let me tell you. Yeah, yeah, so this is good.
And one of the outcomes could be that you guys want to meet like this for your regular city council meetings until we get through this pandemic. I can't get all seven of you at the dais, but if we sat this way, we could still put it on Zoom, but it would be you guys here in person having those conversations. That is one option that we can, that we can discuss going forward because I do think Zoom and the technology makes it extremely difficult for people to engage and make good decisions as an elected official.
So I, I'm racking my brain trying to understand like what policy we've had grand disagreement over here recently in the last six months to a year. I mean, I think we've been sidetracked by a lot of other distracting conversations and zingers, as you call them.
Yeah.
I don't remember a year, going back a year, that we had policy issues amongst each other, true policy issues, where we're truly debating and fighting with each other over policy. There's another distracting element that I'm assuming we're going to chat about. I mean, the work that we need to be doing to Chad's point and I think John's point, that's where our energy needs to be expended, not with the distractions that we're all managing outside of the policy development and management of the city. I think we all agree on a lot of things that are good for the city. We can't seem to be getting past election season, somebody's attitude about one other person's thought or what have you. That's incredibly distracting and it has nothing to do with our city's business as far as I'm concerned. Open for debate on that.
I think it's also really damaging to the community.
Incredibly damaging.
I'll just be very blunt about that.
Been very clear.
I said, watching your last council meeting, first time people were there, 99% of that meeting was excellent. I mean, it just, it just bam, bam, bam.
Business moves forward.
Yeah.
We have debate.
Yeah.
We agree on business and city business is taken care of.
Yeah.
You know, we can continue to do that respectfully. I mean, maybe I think you and I probably agree a lot more on par. You know, we can continue to do that respectfully. I mean, maybe I think you and I probably agree a lot more on parks than you might think we agree on parks.
No, 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 no.
And believe me.
I feel like you're attacking me.
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm just hearing how I'm feeling, appealing that way, so.
All right, but I'm not attacking you, I'm saying that, like, I don't know where you stand on some of the policy issues that I have, you know, that I want to bring forward. And I think that you don't know exactly where I might stand on some of the policy issues, but we may actually have that agreement. We just haven't been able to get to that discussion. I mean, you've been out with council for a month, but I mean, even before that, when you had concerns that you were bringing to the council.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
So that, I, so again, I'm just going to say it because I'm not sure how legally we do that communication without being in the public eye of this. I, I understand we can't do it alone.
Right.
But to have the conversations, I, I just, I firmly believe that, you know, we could even open up a conversation about something and everybody say, yep, that's how we're doing it. And we go, wow, that was fast, that's awesome. And at other times, there's ideas thrown out. You give, uh, constructive reasons why you're where you're at. Everybody listens, some people change their minds, some people don't change their mind. That's the kind of communication that I am used to, and I, like I said, I clearly was totally wrong. I, I own it, I own it.
There, there is nothing illegal about talking one-on-one with each other.
You still do that as long as you're not sequencing.
In fact, you can, three of you can talk, but just don't call the next person and don't make decisions. That's what people care about, just don't make a decision. But you could call, you could call Matt and say, let's talk about this parks thing, see what we can come together on. You the same thing, you know, on, on all these issues that came up. Those two zingers that I, I saw, like I say, they could have been resolved easily with just one phone call, I think.
I think it gets a little smoother as we go because Matt just touched on something I already had written down. Preconceived notions during the election season, that causes a bunch of turmoil and things.
Boy.
It does.
It is. I, I think one of, uh, there are two horrible evils that affect democracy in our way of government and life like crazy. One is preconceived notions, and the other is stridency. Because people will get strident about their preconceived notions and, and go back and forth, and the unwillingness to converse and talk and change opinions or to respect each other. Couldn't agree more, couldn't agree more. So a way to get around that is really important.
I mean, there were years and years where nobody ran against anybody else. There was like, you just checked the one box because the one person was running and opposed. And so, I mean, it's uncomfortable, but there is more, you know, involvement from people.
I think it's a really good sign when you get a lot of people running for council, as long as it's for positive reasons, because they want to get on and help, you know? This is good, this is good.
I have one comment about the elections trying to pop the broil, but not. The biggest issue with the elections, if you look at undervotes, um, there may be people who voted for the ballots in Glass-Stone that didn't vote for anybody. There was more undervotes than there were votes.
It was pretty strong.
And it was, it was the same in Oregon City, Milwaukee, every city was the same. People won't vote for counselors, they don't give a crap. And that, looking at, at the undervotes, if you would have gotten all the undervotes, you would have picked up, I think, eight, nine hundred more votes than people that, why aren't you going to vote for an official? And I think that's a bigger issue than whatever, you know, the two people running, why don't people want to vote?
Good point.
Yeah.
Good point. Maybe part of your job is giving people a reason to care.
Yeah, but it was, it was pretty much the same across the entire county, every city on the, on the undervotes.
Mm-hmm. There was a person who won a seat on a soil and water conservation district in Marion County who found out about it when got the official letter from the, uh, the, the county, or the county clerk. Uh, because it was a write-in, because there wasn't anybody on the ballot, he had no idea that somebody was putting him up for it, so suddenly he became a public official, didn't even know. You know, I mean, you all vote on the soil and water conservation district, folks, don't you? Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know every one of them and what they stand for, right?
And judges.
Nope, yeah, and judges, same thing. Wow, wow.
The highlight of our ballot used to be, oh, look, there's two people running for one seat.
Yeah, exactly.
But the important thing is to think about how people will vote when you put a bond issue or something on the table. Are you going to have the credibility and respect to where they trust you that you made a good, well-informed, well-deliberated, debated decision to come to this proposal and to put it on the ballot?
Well, we kind of see that, though, with the levies, for instance. If you think about it, I mean, on the undervote, you talk about undervotes, I mean, sometimes voting down ballots, and that's part of the reason I, I would assume that we're positioning levies in the off-seasons and in the midterm, right? But, I mean, we do see that, and John's strong, right? So that's, that is this community coming out because they care about those things, and they're going to come out and vote for those things. But at the same time, I think I agree with you, it's like, how do we put ourselves in a position as a city council and as city leaders to get them to care about and want to vote for their council members and be involved instead of passing down the ballot?
Yeah.
As Randy's pointing out, undervoting on the ballot, I mean.
Great question.
Something has to, I mean, something has to stimulate folks to, to want to care about who's leading their city, especially a city that's as small as Gladstone.
And a city where most of the people that live here work outside.
Outside of the city, right.
Get back engaged and ignite and what's going on in that community, it is.
Right.
And it's what affects them the most, is there, I mean, the closest thing is going to be what's happening in your city, not really what's sort of going on at those state and national, you know, federal levels. It's like, this is the stuff that's actually, when you come home, what your property tax bill looks like, what's your, your police department, your fire department, you know what I mean? And so that's why it's really, it'd be nice to get more engagement.
Well, that's why, that's why we can also tell the council can learn from that, when you look at the votes, eighty-five percent of the people voted for the police level. This community cares about their police department and what it does and what they, you know, and backing them, supporting them. And you can look at other things that were voted on.
The school bond passed by, like, almost seventy percent.
That's what I mean, so, see, that's, that's what people care about, so we can tell when we make decisions, I would think, that to lean it toward, people really care about this and this, and make the decision towards that.
They have to care, and they have to trust that you will do a good job with what they're voting yes for. Horrible situation with Yanhill Carlton School District passing a bond about four years ago for a new school, and they estimated eighteen million dollars for a new high school, and it came in at about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, or a million. And, uh, there was just. All credibility was lost, totally was lost because it had been mismanaged. And, uh, so, you, you know, they, it was the first time they passed a levy or a bond election in, from what I understand, thirty or forty years. And, uh, it may be thirty or forty more years before they can ever pass one again. Yeah.
Well, we're in that boat with the school bond.
We are in with that school bond.
Ah.
I have walked door to door, and people say that is the worst thing that we are, you know?
Really?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that somehow we weren't able to curtail the refinance of that school bond. That, and we needed it, it needed to be there, but what the school district did by refinancing it undermined, I think, what a lot of people thought was hap- what they voted for was not what the reality was. And there's a lot of mad people out there, and I feel bad for the school district because my guess is they're going to want another one at some point, and anybody that remembers what happened may not be there to support them again unless they can guarantee.
When does it sunset again? Twenty, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Jeez.
And they're, and Bob was already talking about doing another one.
Is Bob going to be there in twenty twenty-six?
If he gets the right school board, he will.
He was lying too.
All honesty, when you talk about strategically positioning yourself, our city hasn't gone into debt a lot, we should. We may want to go out for an infrastructure bond at that time, and we need to have those conversations with the school board so they know, as a city, we need you to support what we're trying to achieve next time instead of the city just letting the school district pass that bond.
I think the three of us learned last week, we have to have a lot of conversations with the school district.
Yeah.
Which, pre-COVID, we were.
Yes.
Oh, you were, right.
And then that changed.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
Maybe you've got a unique opportunity because of COVID to reinvent right now and then be ready to unleash. Let me all get your vaccinations. Of course, it might be a year or more, we'll see.
I am a low man on the total poll for that.
You are youngest, aren't you? Or are you? Oh, no, yeah.
All right, I'll say.
I already got mine, so.
I'll take it. Um, you know, it's, I've always felt, I, you know, the, the coin of the realm in government, especially local government, is goodwill. I mean, that's all you got in that relationship with, with the citizens and your voters and all, is goodwill. There's nothing else there that fulfills that transactional relationship with a citizen. You, you provide a benefit to them and the services that you, you, you promise you're going to deliver, and you do, and they reward you with goodwill. And it's so easy to go bankrupt. So easy to go bankrupt. It's that classic thing you tell your kids, well, you know, I'll trust you, but when you break the trust, one time you break the trust, and by golly, you're just not going to get, get it back for a long time. And, uh, it's kind of the same thing.
Well, that happens with our, I, I think, our, our city council, too, the department head. They can break your trust, and I just, the only reason I bring it up is because I just walked out of my house to walk here. I don't know if Matt saw it when he drove by, but so, right, they're doing my, my sewer, and I take a picture, and it says, Owen, and they got the big thing we just paid, how many hundreds of thousands for?
So it's interesting you brought that up, Greg, because they had another truck, not that, not that truck, but another one down on my street. So I'm assuming that they're doing all the drain cleanouts and they hired a company to do, to use their.
It's part of the I and I study where they're TVing our lines right now, and that is all going to be, that's information that's, that's gone out, but that's what you're seeing.
Because I was thinking the same thing.
I asked, I went out and asked, what are you doing? He goes, oh, we're just cleaning all the lines. And I said, okay, he goes, we were contracted by the city, and I went, we just, I just thought to myself, well, we just bought a nice.
So you just asked the right question, and Jackie answered it, where you now, when your neighbors come up to you, you're in a position to answer it. Yeah, that's critically important.
The training of, like, you know, people, I mean, I, look here, we have a weak mayor system, each person has a vote, I mean, you have to, like, educate people. I, I mean, I don't know if when you buy a house, you need to go through a civics, you know, for pressure or what, but it's like, that's sort of what I find, that, that's my, one of my biggest jobs is relaying what we're doing here back to people, and then relaying what they're saying about that back to this group. You know what I mean? That's the majority of what I do.
Brilliant.
You're probably the same way, it's sort of being that conduit.
If you don't know, you come to me, and you might do that yesterday.
Oh, I can do all that.
I know.
You don't know, you give it to me, and then I reply to you and that person, so you know.
I didn't want to answer it wrong, and I didn't want to pretend I knew something that I didn't.
Yeah, probably.
You know, and that's where Jackie could play a critical role if there's something that's nagging at you about another counselor. I mean, sure, it's always best maybe to go and, and sit down and talk, but she may know both sides of the story and can help out perhaps with that. And by golly, your phone's on twenty-four, seven, right? And she called me at ten o'clock last night, so. Wow. Any other reflections on this, and then maybe we'll eat dinner? But how are you doing with this? I mean, if you looked at this and judged it, it sounds like it's pretty darn positive, except for a couple little niggling worries in it or something? Any, any sense about it?
Well, I want to go back to what Matt was saying, because there, there are underlying issues within this group. I've read the emails, the hate speech about me, the people who can't stand the, the ground I walk on. Many of these people I've never even talked to, so that tells you a lot about how much credibility they hold in, in my house, in my person. I'm on council, I have to work with these people. I don't judge them, I don't go home and think about what they're doing. But I try to go back and think about what I could have done differently so that I am not, um, so that somebody doesn't take what I'm doing or what I'm saying wrong and hope that, no matter what happens, you would all come to me with a conversation that you would like to have. Because there is one thing that somebody told me a long time ago about a relationship that they had, and they said, you know, the thing that hurts me the most is to know that somebody's talking behind my back. That I, then I thought they were my friend. And I know that a friend is somebody that will, you know, move your couch for you and help you pack your house at the last damn minute, that's a friend. So we, we may only be acquaintances, but I have to, I ha- in order for me to succeed and succeed with everyone, I have to be able to work with you. And in order to work with you, we have to be able to have conversations. And I can't, I can't worry about what your friends say about me, I can't worry about what your, if your family does or doesn't like me. I can't, I, I can't be my best person with the second tier of your life. I have to work with this. So for me, you have my conversation, you have my truth. And I can pretty much guarantee you that I'm not here to judge you. That's not my job, that's not what God put me on this earth to do, and I'm not going to start doing it, because I could rack my brain all damn night for it. So I want to do a really good job, and I respect you, Matt, a lot.
I appreciate that, man.
A lot.
I respect you as well.
And I want you to want me to succeed, because I want all of us to succeed for this community. There are so many awesome people in this community, and some of them who can't even come out and help us pick up trash, they're so fragile. But we, I want them to want us, I want them to know that we're doing everything we can for them, and not, disagreeing is fine. I get it, that's part of life. But calling each other names, or, as I've been told, controlling what other people's, people in their house, or their friends, or their girlfriends, or their wives, or their husbands, we don't have control over that. We only have control over what we are. But I want you guys to want me to succeed as much as I want me to succeed and all of you and us as a group. That's what I think about, that's what has eaten me for two and a half weeks, so now I said.
Let me share.
So that, I mean, that's, that's important to, because to me, I don't, I don't believe in winner-take-all mentality, maybe. So what I'm saying to you is that, um, I run work teams, oftentimes give a lot of credit to those teams, because I want the team to excel, I want the team to rise. I don't believe that I gain by your loss, or, you know, you know what I'm saying? So I agree with you, I think we, that's the thing that has struck, struck me about all of this, is that fundamentally, we might disagree on some things.
Yes.
But it opens the door to compromise, and that's what politics is, compromise. So it's like, we might fundamentally disagree on this point of A, B, and C, let's say we disagree on B, but we can come to the compromise so that we both get A, C, and D. And B, we may work through a different rendition of what B looks like, right?
Right.
But I don't win by your loss, that's not how I view my life. I know you're, you're religious, I am spiritual, and I don't look at life as, I have to win for me to, you know, you have to lose for me to win.
Right.
So I agree with you, let's elevate the group up to a trust level and just conduct the business. And to your point, and I thought it was really interesting, you said, you know, that tier has no consequence in your life, right? That tier level where you might be more involved personally, or you're thinking about, somebody might be thinking about you in some certain way, that's not where you are, you're up here, right? This is where we all should be, we should all be working for the community. People say something about somebody else, you know, it's good for us to tamp it down a little bit and say, look, this is not acceptable, or, you know, you might have your opinion, but I don't agree with your opinion.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So I appreciate hearing that from you, and I, I probably, honestly, I'm not surprised that that's how you feel about this.
I just want us all to do so good, I'm just.
Well, let's put it this way.
I want somebody to say, you know that council in twenty twenty-one, were they not the best council ever?
Remember that, you want them to say that, you want your kids twenty years from now to say, thank God that council came together and did this. I mean, think about that. So, uh, Matt, in response to what you're saying, I, I, I think we can just boil this down to say, don't behave like Congress. You know, which, where it is a zero-sum game in a lot of ways, and, uh, for you, it's different. And I'm also thinking, you're talking about, you got A, B, C, and D, well, maybe if. Well, maybe if you talk, you come up with E together, which is better than any of the others, perhaps. Talk. Brainstorm. Be innovative.
Well, and when the public sees us all united, and I mean, if I go away, when I watch a good council meeting, I go, well, they're getting squared away. That gives me so much confidence and trust in my council. It's only a win-win.
Yeah, I, I, I love that. And part of what I, I say when I'm working on economic development in all of communities, and it really applies here too, is, is that the investors and the people that want to buy, and the people that want to bring those businesses you want, and they've got a lot of choices where to invest their money, they're not gonna go someplace where the council doesn't have its act together. And they are mindful of that. They will not invest if city government isn't just cooking along and city government has its act together.
It's the same with recruiting personnel.
Oh, yeah.
They will not apply to work here if there's dysfunction on a governing body.
Yeah, the new city manager, Wes Lynn, you know, he came from out of state, because nobody else would apply. So, hey, I've got a bunch of government reference things here. Looking at someone's set of council rules, it says, council members will refrain from criticizing or attacking each other, city staff, or other persons. Wow. That kind of, you know, speaks to kind of what you're talking about. Does that make some, do you agree with that? Is that a good statement? I mean, it's something you ought to adopt. Council members will refrain from criticizing or attacking each other, city staff, or other persons. And I think that means not just council meetings. It means in your role in the community, is the way I'd read that. That make some sense? Let's see, where'd that come from? Oh, the Gladstone Council Rules. Son of a gun. When'd you last read your council rules?
Jackie gave them to me. I read them.
Read them, okay. I've got copies, extra ones, if you want them. It's actually a very comprehensive set of rules, more than a lot of cities have. Well done, Chad. Yeah, well done. Well done. All right. Should we take a break?
So, while John's finishing up the phone call, he told me to go ahead and do my three quick housekeeping things, and we don't have to do it tomorrow. One of them is, we have a schedule of when the municipal judge will be presiding in here. She is the Amy Lundgren, the one that you just appointed. Her first day is next Tuesday. If you are interested, because you do oversee the judge, the city attorney, and me, you can sign up for a court date, and you can actually go into a conference room, and we have a monitor where you can watch in there instead of coming in here because of COVID. So, I'm gonna pass this around. I think it's a good idea. You, you will really enjoy watching our municipal judge in action. And we used to do this a couple of years ago, where a, a different counselor would come in at least once a quarter or once a month just to observe on a Tuesday. So, it's two Tuesdays a month. So, if you could start thinking about that. And just a reminder, we did a six-month pro-chem agreement for Amy to start there. The second thing is that this past year, we switched our workers' compensation company to SAFE. And you, as volunteers, are covered under workers' compensation, but the requirement that they ask is that you keep a timesheet of the hours that you volunteer each month. So, Tammy Bannick is going to be emailing you a time card, and all you really have to do is council meeting, three hours, or keep it that much. They just need to have an idea of how many hours you are volunteering a month. So, that's something new that is starting with our volunteers. And we have to do that with all of our boards and commissions as well, and we'll go over that with our training. The third thing is that, Tammy, you have council liaison appointments?
Yes.
And you wanted to talk about those?
Yes.
The main one is planning commission. Well, we went over this the other night, so let's pass around. Planning commission asked that they had a liaison, which, were you there for the planning commission meeting?
No.
Was David?
No, it was me.
It was just you?
Yeah.
Okay. I spent 14 years on planning commission, and we never, ever had a liaison. And the reason we didn't is because of the quasi-judicial nature of the commission. And one of the comments made was, well, nothing ever gets appealed, so why would we care? Well, that's not the right approach. You have to look at every single decision that you make on planning commission as appealable. So, I'm not comfortable having a liaison, but as far as everybody on the council, I'm the only one with liaison experience, I mean, planning experience, so it would make sense that I do it. But I would want to do it on a hands-off kind of basis. What do you think about that, Chad?
Yeah, I, I think that your instincts are exactly correct, Mayor. And I think that if you wanted to have a liaison, the liaison should be there for non-quasi-judicial matters. So, for example, if they're talking about amendments to the Development Code. Tax amendments, those sorts of things. But it's fine for you to be at those, because you don't have those same types of issues. Even though that'll come to you at the city council, it's okay for you to have been there. But for quasi-judicial matters, I think on those, on those agenda items, you could just leave, if you really want to do that. So, you could be there for like, the beginning of the meeting. When the hearing process comes up, you leave, and they can go forward with their work, and you wouldn't have to be there for that.
I just, I don't understand why they feel so strongly that they need a liaison for that. No, I think it, which, they liked the idea that an elected official reported back to the full council on the items that they discussed, and they appreciated the time that the elected official took to do that. So, we never had any, I mean, he never reported back. We heard, well, everybody did a good job, kind of things. I mean, we never heard the specific issues that were being discussed on planning. So.
A lot of other cities just provide the planning commission minutes to the council as a way to do that instead, to avoid this issue. So, that's an option that you could explore without having to have a liaison.
You don't have to appoint anybody, but I wanted you to know that at their last meeting, they did say that they wished that they could have a liaison, because they appreciated the continuity between the council and the planning commission. How do you guys feel about that? I just, I mean, I'm willing to do it. I just, I just think because of the nature of the commission, that it's probably not a smart thing to do. Anybody, right?
I, if, if they don't mind, I mean, I asked, like, I asked Michael about that last one. I said, can I be at this planning commission meeting and sit in and listen? And he said, yeah, unless it's quasi-judicial, then I, then he says, you, you'd have to tell you can't be here and listen. But besides that, we have no problem with council, you know, listening in or being around or anything, unless it's gonna come to that, I guess.
Is there anything coming up, or is it a work plan issue that they want some help with that, or?
I would suggest that if it's you, you not do it, because if you look at the amendments here, you have too many.
Oh, I know.
So, I would, I would say that you don't have to appoint anybody. I just wanted to make sure that we were relaying that comment back to you.
And I would, someone else could do it, but you really need to understand the whole planning process and what it is that they do, and the issues that are gonna be sticky for us not to be involved with. Well?
Then don't do it. I mean, I, you know, well, I had something extra you don't need to, and unless you're, if you're not gonna give an update, that's me. I mean, I.
Because Jackie, you're at everyone.
Well, I'm trying not to be.
Try not to be. Do we have a staff member if there's an issue that needs?
We have our senior planner, and if it is a quasi-judicial or a public hearing, we typically have our city attorney on there too, so.
So, if there's issues, well, if it's quasi-judicial, then it's gonna come to us if it's appealed. But there's that timeline, so after a certain number of months, then they could report what was going on in planning without interfering in that process.
And if it's appealed, the record's gonna come to you, so you're gonna see what happened at planning.
Right.
So, their question was that they wanted to be, they wanted a liaison like the rest of the board?
Yes.
So, my, I guess my question is, are, are they feeling like some of the things that they're doing are not being heard?
No, I think they liked that an elected official observed their meeting. They liked having that representation.
Well, and the rest of the boards get it. I mean, I, I can understand that they would want to be heard as well, and maybe what they're doing brought forward each month, but I'm gonna defer to you.
Completely different.
And I hear what you're saying.
I mean, that's the problem with it, is it's, it's not necessarily advisory. I mean, they're legally binding decisions, land use decisions. So, it's, it's a different animal.
And I only have ever gone to those when something came up that clearly I was not happy with.
You could read it after you have it with none and just see how it goes for the first quarter.
And see, yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was any issue that they were addressing that really needed a liaison to intervene or advise.
Maybe you could do it on that basis, where they can request, when there's something vague that they feel that they really want someone there, they could request and say, for this meeting, we'd like someone to attend. So, instead of having someone to attend all the time, they can let you know when it's important. As long as it's not quasi-judicial, then you guys can make the decision to send someone or not.
Okay. And then it doesn't necessarily have to be me. I guess it just maybe with experience under your belts, that you guys will all be a little bit more familiar with what that process is, so we could share the wealth.
I was just gonna say, is there any way to take turns? I mean, can't any of us, as a, as a, as a counselor, go to any department head, make an appointment and talk to him about anything? I mean, can't we do that?
Well, yeah, but this is, this is a little bit different than that, but.
Yeah, as long as I know about it.
Oh, you just let you know I'm gonna reach out to so-and-so and, and, okay, all right.
Yeah, that, all that staff contact stuff has to go through Jackie.
What time does the court start on the day you pick?
Yeah. It's different times. So, what I would suggest when you sign up, you, you can come in the morning. It's cases, and I believe 9:00. And then there's a break between like 11:00, and then there's traffic court. That's the fun one.
Traffic court, yeah, so 11:00?
Usually about 1:00 or 1:30.
What's the one, what's the court before that? What is it, just?
It's just if we have any kinds of cases that they have to decide.
Like the big ones?
Yeah, we haven't had a jury trial yet here. But I think it's good, because you may, you will be deciding longer term what to do with the judge position. So, I think it's good for you to come in and observe. But we'll get the exact times from the court administrator on that.
So, 1:00 is traffic court.
Sometimes it's 1:30, so I want to give you the exact.
That was that line the other day when I came in, it was all the way around the building? Yeah.
Yeah, so, back to planning. So, I, I like your idea where if they request a liaison for a particular meeting, I think that might be the best approach to that.
I just don't, I think you're already heavy in this. I don't think that we need to have something that may not be necessary very often.
Yeah, it's my passion. I absolutely love planning. Love, love, love it. So, I give up everything. Oh, my gosh. I love it, but. Yeah, so, is that all right? We'll just do that, is if they need, let me know, and then we'll see who's available to attend.
And I think that after you hear our work plan tomorrow, you'll be, one, very excited about what's gonna happen the next few years, but two, see that the council and planning commission have some joint projects that will overlap, and maybe they'll feel good about that, so.
Well, I was thinking affordable housing. That's an issue that they're looking at, and that we're also looking at, and that maybe that's why they need a liaison. But that's, I mean, we're already partnering up on it, so it's not really a need for a separate person. Okay, so we'll just do it that way. And then police and fire, I know, Anessa, you'd shown interest in being part of the police and fire. My, it's, my history on that is that we do not normally have direct contact with staff, because everything needs to go through Jackie. So, honestly, I didn't even want, a couple of years ago, I didn't even want a police and fire liaison, because I felt, felt that giving one person additional access to staff direct was a prob, could be a problem.
Sure.
So, I think having two is kind of a redundant thing and maybe not the best. So, I would, and I still want to keep looking at that position, whether that's even something we want to continue. But I do, I change this every year. So, would it be okay if you stayed with school?
Yeah.
Keep Greg on police and fire? And if you want to learn more about police, that's great.
Yeah.
Just coordinate it through Jackie, and then we'll just see how things fall out. You know, maybe people are gonna want to change and find different interests in the next year anyway.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. That was it from me.
Now, we can do anything we want, no, I mean, as long as we, that you know, right?
Well, well, it doesn't give you free pass to do it.
No.
No, I don't, I, you know what I mean? Like, like the other night when I saw, saw Matt and Anessa at school there, and, and so, I, I walked over and stopped. That, did I need to let you know I was going to that, or?
If you.
Okay.
But anytime you're going someplace where you're gathering with people as a counselor, it's always a good idea to give me a heads up on that. And I think the more I can share with all of you, so you know what each other's doing, the better off that we are.
Well, and school is, is a special problem child, because before I became mayor, the, the city council and school district did not have a relationship. They're completely separate taxing entities. They, we don't control each other in any way, shape, or form. So, we decided to start that relationship right away, and I think it's been good. We've been looking at things that, that impact us both, that we can team up on, life affordable housing, because that was impacting the school district. Food pantry, the stuff that we can be in a supportive role. And I just want us to be super careful that that's where we stay, because I don't want us to step over that line and become adversarial or go down a rabbit hole that we, that we, we need to be separate. We really need to be separate as poss, you know. I wish that we controlled school district. That would sure fix a lot of things. Well, I think it would fix a lot of things.
That brings me, that's sort of a fine line, isn't it? You, you want to listen to the, to the, the community.
Yes.
And these are people that are, school members, you know, school parents, that they, they want to be heard, and we're the council.
But they need to understand, then you need to let them know. School district is just, it, it's not something that's within our scope.
Okay, I guess it brings me back to this question about the bond. So, you'll take our tax dollars.
Right, I'm kind of where you're going, Greg. I, I still believe, whether we're distinct or bifurcated or not, this is still a city that we represent the citizens in. The school district is de facto is part of that city. So, if they're not, if the citizens are becoming so frustrated that the school board's not listening to them, and I think that's the case in point from the other night, they're coming to us. So, then we're supposed to be communicating. We're supposed to be that conduit, I believe, to the school board, right?
On eggshells. On eggshells, we're the conduit.
So, couple suggestions. You can always provide me information, so I can help you navigate. It's okay for you to talk to other school board members elected to elected, as long as you're not meeting with.
It's also okay for me to be a parent in the school district and share my unfettered view with the school board.
Right.
Right?
As long as you don't invoke being a city councilor, representing the council.
Yes.
Not a problem, because I just identified myself as a parent in the school district. But I guess my point is, I think we're playing, I, I understand the eggshell comment, but I think this is part of our problem with the school district and city.
I agree with you 100%.
Is they're running pretty much without any restraints or constraints, and we have a population of citizens who are saying they're not listening to us.
Yeah, right.
So, we probably ought to strategize about how to move forward, because we heard an earful the other night.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I, I looked into it more.
And it's not, it's, it's, it's four years of earful. I mean, it's, it's nothing new. It's, of course, COVID puts a whole nother spin on it, but, I mean, it, there's issues, big issues.
Well, and transparency issues is what we're hearing in part of our problem.
Yeah.
Can I just interject real quick? Because I just want to make sure, especially with new councils, that everyone fully understands the point that the mayor was making, is that the school district is a separate legal entity. There's a separate government body. They're not affiliated with the city at all. They're elected separately. They have their own budget. They have their own tax dollars. The city has no control over them. What you can try to do is influence them, you know, if through, you know, if you're providing support to them, say, we're not gonna stop, stop providing support to you. You can influence them by passing resolutions or taking other public stands as a body. But you have, and you should be clear with the citizens, no legal control over them whatsoever.
We were very clear about that, Chad.
Okay.
So, there's not any question about the three, when the.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that all the new council.
We said that numerous times, and I think each one of us said it to this parent.
Yeah, and then the other point I just want to make is just to always keep in mind that as an individual counselor, you have no authority to act on behalf of the city, that you have to wait till the city, the, the council as a body makes a decision. They can delegate that authority to you, and you can take a position, or stay, state a position on behalf of the city. But otherwise, you need to do exactly what Matt did and make sure that you're being clear, that you're speaking in your personal capacity, you're not there as a city council. So, I'm here as a parent, that's fine, but you don't want to give the impression that you're somehow speaking on behalf of the city when you're not there in some. When you're not there in some official capacity.
Yeah.
Can you be on the city council and run and be on the school board at the same time?
Um, potentially.
I'm just asking, I mean.
Potentially.
It's a separate entity.
It's a separate entity. There are limitations in, in the, in the Oregon constitution about dual office holding. And so when positions sort of overlap, you can have incompatible offices that, you know, would require you to vacate your first office. So if you're on city council and you run for the school board, if it's deemed to be an incompatible office, you automatically vacate your city council position. So you may not wanna go down that road.
But you need to find good people around for school.
The mayor of Woodburn.
See, that's, that's where I'm with the whole thing. It's like, I really love voting in those good school board people.
Yeah, the mayor of Woodburn's on the, uh, Woodburn's, um, school board. Ran when he was mayor and was elected and.
Oh, no, thank you.
Yeah, I, there were a lot of folks that thought that wasn't such a good idea.
You had another suggestion. I cut you off.
No, that's fine. I think, I think we're got to where we needed to be with that.
We were very clear about it. And we also, I mean, we were, we, we said it emphatically a number of times. It is a different entity.
And I appreciate that you gave me a heads up because there was some social media out there about, hey, we're meeting with the council and stuff. So it's always good checks and balance.
How do you people see this that fast?
Yeah, so that was a concern is, you know, the council, a part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it makes them feel, and it is, they're getting listened to.
Yes.
Like somebody who they obviously think can do something, but apparently we can't.
But I think that's, that's.
It's very frustrating.
You can be the person to make sure that that is explained.
Yes.
And you can make introductions to people.
Oh, and that's a knack that great, yeah.
But I mean, but you can be the person who makes the introduction to, you know, Greg Lind, who's the chair, or you know what I mean? Sort of having that kind of a, a thing. You don't have to be like, you know, feel, feel like, well, I can't do anything, so I don't need to be there. Because I think you could be there and be engaged. And, um, and to sort of help facilitate. You know who you should talk to?
This is what you should do.
Well, is that the same as answering questions? Because I've been asked, okay, there's no school right now, but are the, and the bus barn's empty? Are we still paying the bus drivers? Are we still paying the school nurses? Are we still paying the school lunches or the janitors? Because a gutter backed up and it caused some water down? I mean, so who's paying all these people? Are they getting paid or the, I mean?
That's all school.
But that's our money they got from the bond, right?
But it's not us.
It's, it's. The, the bond was voted by, by the people. The, the county just facilitates actually, you know, calculating what that is.
The system.
It's not a city bond.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, that's why when people get mad and say how much they pay in taxes, they can't believe you guys don't do it better. And it's like, well, if you really look at it, the city's budget's a pretty, pretty small percentage of a.
It's not us.
A tax bill.
I, I would just say though, kind of a big esoteric view, you have to be mindful of conventional wisdom. And when you had to explain yourselves to those citizens, they sort of think of, I mean, my, my experience is the vast majority of citizens don't have any clue.
No.
All they care about is local government. And they think all those groups are local government. They write one property tax check and they expect you all to know everything about each other. And sure, you can say not, but I, I, you know, I love Tracy's comment of being a, a leader and being a conduit to help people get to where they need to be. Find the right resources or that kind of thing, rather than just, eh, you know, here, here's the superintendent's number or something. And maybe there's a way to remember that. Conventional wisdom, you've gotta work within until you have an opportunity to straighten it out.
And people hear what they wanna hear, too. Yeah, I mean, because they're gonna hear, city councilor Matt Tracy said, the city can do this for us. No, that's not what I said.
And you didn't do it as a city council?
And you did do it as a city councilor.
Yeah.
I know.
Concerns it.
Yeah. No, but they hear what they wanna hear.
I hear, I do hear what you're saying. And, and, and I'm sure you guys clarified who you were, but I, I will say that I have heard over the years, you know, why, I, we should probably bury the axe, but over the years, that the school districts run, they run it themselves. And they don't want any conflict from any parent, anyone.
No checks and balance.
You go with the flow or you move out of their way.
Well, it's also a political environment, and they're gonna ask for support for the school bond. I mean, you know.
No, I hear you.
We have a lot of citizens who might not vote for it.
I went and bought a lottery ticket last night because I had to homeschool my grandson for three days, and I thought somebody was gonna have to put me into a mental institution. So I'm gonna find him a good boarding stool.
Well, let's, uh, let's work toward wrapping this up. Would you like to give your discussion now before we jump back into the big conversation?
So I just wanna take a couple of quick minutes just to talk about the, the role of the city attorney in, in our office, especially for the new counselors. So just a little bit about our office is that you'll likely see more than just me from our office. We have several attorneys in our office who all specialize in different areas. So depending on the particular topic, what we try to do is have the attorney who specializes in a, in a particular area be the attorney to work with the client on that particular issue. So for example, when you're talking about land use, David in our office is probably the one who will come to even a city council meeting when you've got a land use issue coming up because he's the one who does that. And like some of you said, when you talk about land use stuff, I can't stand it, so I try to avoid it like the plague. So David, David will jump in and handle that. So you're gonna see different faces from our office. You may get written stuff from different individuals from our office, but that's just wise, because we're trying to give you the person who's most qualified to be working on that particular issue. So you get the best service and frankly, the cheapest service, because it takes them a lot less time than it may take me to figure out a land use issue. David can do it in 10 minutes where it's gonna take me two hours. The other thing I wanna talk about is just sort of the role of the city attorney and touch on some of the things that you guys talked about a little earlier tonight. And that our role is to not provide policy advice. We're not here to make policy decisions. That's up to you all. Our job is to basically let you know, here's what the legal ramifications of the decision you're making. Here's the legal risk you're taking. And you get to make the decision. We just want you to make the decision with your eyes wide open. And so it's not gonna offend any of us if you reject our advice. You're not gonna be the first, you're not gonna be the last. And I can promise you that no matter what position you take, we will do our best to defend that if it's challenged. And so I don't want you to think, just because we're giving you legal advice and we're saying, there's a lot of risk here. You need to be very careful. This isn't the best idea, that we're trying to influence you not to do something. We just want you to make sure that you're making that decision with your eyes wide open. And then when you make that decision, whatever decision that is, we're gonna do our best to defend you because our client is the city as an entity, and you all make those decisions for the city. And when you've made that decision, it's our job to defend that on behalf of the city. And so our job is not to try to take sides or try to be political. It's just to give you all the information to the best of our ability so you can make a decision. And to do that, it's really, really, really helpful to sort of get information in advance to the extent it's possible. While we can certainly try to answer questions at a city council meeting, answer questions on the fly. Sometimes we don't wanna do that because it creates risk for the city. It creates legal liability for the city if we start answering a question in public, because that waives the attorney client privilege. And then we have to basically share the advice with the whole world. And we may not wanna do that because we may tell, we may wanna tell you, if you go down this road, here's all these risks, and here's how you might be sued, and here's your potential liability. And we don't wanna broadcast to the world how to sue you if you decide to make that decision. So, and then the other thing is, you know, it, this is a joke, and I apologize if you've heard it before, but it's called the practice of law for a reason. It's because, you know, you don't necessarily always know the answer. And I will freely admit to you that I don't know. I've been doing this for 20 some years. I feel like I know a lot, but I don't know all the answers. And, and if a lawyer tells you that they know all the answers, don't believe a word that they're saying. And so I think, you know, to the extent that you can give us advance notice of an issue or a question that you have or work through Jackie, you know, staff will probably be able to answer a lot of questions. Or we can be better prepared to answer the question, or maybe even answer the question in advance for you, because it may not be the kind of question or the kind of answer that you want to get publicly. And, and that goes across the board, you know, for whatever it is, you know, whether it's a policy decision or, you know, sometimes unfortunately with this council, we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, so and so did this, or so and so did that. Is that okay? Is that legal? And those aren't the kinds of questions that I wanna answer in a public meeting. And it may be a kind of question that I'll work with Jackie and we'll give you guys an answer about what, you know, is the legal ramifications or the legal boundaries of what can be done or not be done. But it's not necessarily something that I wanna get into in a public setting. And you're the client, you get to ask the questions. I'm just asking that you don't do that to our office, because it does sort of make us seem political, like we're taking sides. And we really don't wanna take sides. We don't wanna be political. This is not our community. We care about our clients, but we feel strongly that this is your community and you make the decisions that are in the best interest of your community. And we're gonna support that no matter what it is. And it doesn't matter what my personal political beliefs are, what David's are, what Ash's are, you know, it's not for us to decide, because this isn't our community. It's for you all to decide, and we're gonna support that. And we don't wanna be put in a position where, where members of the council feel like we're taking one side over the other, or we're aligned with one political side over the other. Now hopefully, you all move past that. You don't have one side or the other. You're all just working together. And that's the goal of tonight, and this won't be an issue. But I know it's been an issue in the past, and I feel like, you know, knock on wood, I haven't had this feeling, but I feel like others in my office have had the feeling that they're being set up to be shown that they're taking one side over the other. And we want to avoid that to the largest extent possible, because I do think that that hinders our ability to give you advice in a manner that people trust. And when you talk about credibility, you talk about all this kind of stuff, your relationship with your lawyer needs to be one of trust. And if you can't trust the advice we're giving you because you think we're doing it for, for political reasons, then that relationship is broken and we can't really do our job. And so I just wanna be as clear and open and, and as, as, as open as possible to let you know that we really try not to do that. We try not to be put in that position. And, you know, if you come to me with a question and I give you advice, I can give that same advice to any other counselor who asks. You know, we're gonna give the same advice to everybody. And then you guys can decide what to do with that, as you will. And we will do our best to remain apolitical, but you make the decision and defend whatever decision that you guys as a body make. And so that's my plea to you, to try to help sort of prepare the relationship that we talked about in the past. I thought it was, you know, worthwhile at least bring this up in this setting to allow you to ask questions or air issues or complaints that you have with our office. You know, we want to address them. We want to be here for you. We wanna have that credibility so you trust the advice that we're giving you, and we're not seen as being political or taking one side over the other. And so that's the message I wanted to send. It's really not more than that, but I just wanna make sure that that was on the table for you all to consider.
And you said something important, and that was go to staff, because maybe staff can answer the question first. Well, before we go to Chad, and when I first became mayor before, we had attorney bills that were absolutely outrageous because we had certain council members that had free and open access to legal. And we, Jackie has reined that in. We have meetings now where we don't even have to have an attorney there. So.
And, and I fully advocate that, because I think you all have amazing staff who have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge. And, and even if they don't know the answer, they know how to ask the question of our office. That saves a lot of time. So instead of spending a half hour on the phone trying to explain the issue, they can ask the question in two minutes, which obviously you know we charge by the minute. So that, right there alone, saves you a bunch of money. So I fully endorse and encourage exactly what the mayor's saying.
I keep coming back to big decisions that are good, defensible, incredible. And that's a pattern. Credible is a pattern over time. So you dismiss legal advice at your own peril. Be aware of that. On the other hand, we know that the job of the attorney is to make sure you're intensely risk averse. And there are times that audacity is important. So just tell him what you're gonna do, and hopefully he can mop up after you if you need to. If something audacious you as a group need to do.
Yeah, and don't expect that, yes, you should do this and no, you should not, because you are not going to get that.
Right. True, true. 6:30. What are we gonna do? Great conversation before dinner. Put a lot of stuff out on the table. I, I would say it was a positive conversation all around. I really appreciate that. Let me, let me just, one other nugget of learning to offer you, and I, I've learned this a lot in the work that I do, including the fact I teach leadership in the public realm a lot. And, you know, a definition of leadership is different than the definition of what your job is. But yet you're still leaders. So how would you define leadership in the context of what you bring to the table here? Any, any thoughts on that?
Well, I'd like to hear from the seasoned fellows.
Everybody's new. I mean, four years, seriously, four years is the longest any of us have been on council. They're, everybody's new.
Yeah, but we lead in other areas. I mean, leadership isn't just being an elected official to me. I mean, you learn to lead teams, John, groups and what have you. And I think the one thing that's missing in this council and has been since I've been on it, since the night I was appointed and sworn in, is, is trust at this point. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I have a total lack of trust. We've soft shoe'd tonight. There are some very difficult conversations we should be having.
So start them.
Well, I, it's not my role to start them. That's not my position. My position is to work with a facilitator. I'm, I'm not pushing back any mini, but we have a facilitator, so it's supposed to be starting this conversation. I don't, I'm not gonna regain their trust. It's gonna take me a while. And I'm sure there are other people on the council that feel the same way about me.
Well, let's, let's lay it out.
Well, we've been here for two and a half hours.
Okay. So we talked a lot about, you know, just kind of this framework for governing and your common ambitions and desires and vision for the community. And your acknowledgement of the great things that you do as a council and some acknowledgement of some of the angst and agony and relationship issues that have happened. But I'm hoping that we can finish the evening by agreeing to at least a conceptual way to avoid that. And that gets into the hard conversation of what's on the table and how do we resolve it. Hopefully in a manner that is civil and productive. So let's go ahead and get the hard ones out there. Yeah. You wanna start, Matt, with your concerns?
Well, I, I think, I would like, I mean, going back to, I think, the original part of the conversation. I think that really council needs to be focused on the business of the city, right? And on our citizens and that, I mean. There's a lot of, you know, just take the election season out of it. That's not all that we battle with. I think we constantly have to be on guard for an attack. You either attacking me or me attacking you, if you see it that way, mayor. You know, it's not a bad opinion anymore. And by that, I mean, it's not like I'm gonna come out in opposition to something the mayor wants or to anybody else who's a council necessarily. It's like everything else just seems to be very personal. And I think we, we have to kind of get beyond that, because I don't, again, going back to this, I don't think anybody's losing, we're not in competition with each other. We're supposed to be a team, whether we agree or not. So I don't think people are losing by my benefiting as, you know, benefiting as a winner in a conversation. It doesn't help. I mean, it, you know, that's not the, that's not what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm just trying to really understand, let's go back and take away June of 2020. Let's go back in time, and I'm not trying to revise history. But prior to June of 2020, we still struggled across the council. We've been struggling for a long time. And I think, you know, I mean, you're new to the council, Greg's new to the council, Anessa's new to the council. We've gotta change this pattern, because I think we're now hearing from citizens, I'm hearing from people I've never met before in my life, calling me at home and saying, I don't like how you guys act. Not just the mayor, not just me, not just Tracy Todd or Randy Ripley, but how are you all at? So we're gonna have to show our citizens they can trust us. We're gonna have to build our trust within the council, but we gotta build our trust with the community. You know, I don't wanna see a recall campaign. It's the last thing I wanna see. It's damaging to our city. It's damaging to our citizens, you know? So I want us to be able to build that trust. I think we probably need to all put down our swords and shields going forward and start to work collectively and collaboratively. I mean, I just don't win by somebody else losing. So, you know, personal things where somebody says something to somebody else on the playground, let's all grow out of that for a while. Let's see if we can maybe sustain two months of that not happening. You know what I mean?
I'd be amazed how many feels and what you could done.
It could be amazing, because look at all the energy that gets diverted into that conversation, which has no, no merit in the city whatsoever, that can be used for policy or for doing the good works of the city.
And as you pointed out, what you're doing is losing goodwill.
We are losing goodwill.
Losing goodwill. That's tough.
And, and I don't think that's a legacy anybody on this council wants. And, and I don't think that's a legacy anybody on this council wants.
Couple of zingers I saw were just personal issues and that, you know, get, get down to relationships is the tough part of all this. It's sort of boils down to.
People's personalities coming out is what it is. So, it's not that somebody had a bad day, we're seeing, we're seeing what they truly are as a person.
But that's really punching below the belt because I think that you all are all really good people.
Yeah. And I have never publicly lied about anything. I've never written anything in papers that are absolute lies, and everybody knows they're lies.
Neither have I.
I haven't said you have.
But you're looking right at me, you're attacking me.
I'm looking at Sean, I'm not looking at you. Boy, I might look at you, you might look over on top of me.
Okay.
And I like, I'm down, I count down. But, and I'm not talking to you. I'm just saying, when you, when you continue to do this stuff and people know the data behind it and they know, tell them the truth, you're, you're, you look like a liar. And you're not going to rebuild trust when that's a, a daily thing almost.
Sounds pretty specific.
There's a few things during this campaign thing that absolutely blew me away. And one, didn't have any first people here, but when another city councillor goes and writes something about an eighteen-year firefighter who gave his time, and he goes and says, you shouldn't vote for this guy because he never really gave you time, the wood chunks in this town are insane. If I want Matt to win at something, I do that by making her look like the biggest piece of crap. That's what you see nonstop. If you want everybody to win, let's beat some bad ass up for no reason.
You agree? That this is such.
The election was brutal.
I'm a water parrier. That, that will be my history, I'm a water parrier.
Yeah, that's right, you are.
Yes.
And you're stupid.
Oh, I'm stupid too, I forgot that.
This is not healthy.
I don't carry it. I, I work hard at my personal stuff, my personal relationship with myself. I don't carry it. But I also don't want to have animosity, so, you know.
Sure. Animosity is.
It's just.
It, it, it's incredibly damaging to why you are here.
Yeah.
To serve this community.
Well, a part of it too, John, is that I think you look at seasoned politics. So at different levels, obviously, state senate, state legislative levels, they're kind of more used to this, and it's a different position, right? You know, it's more career oriented.
And they get paid.
Career position. So you're able to move on, right? You know, me and I could have both supported other candidates or what have you, or fought against each other in the election, right? But then you're moving on beyond that. You know, it's, it's interesting, if you think about it, there are a few of our notable folks who worked pretty closely together in Oregon State Legislature, or even on a national level, who've been brutal to each other in elections, right? Or, you know, supported people where they were brutal back and forth, but you move on and work together. So they build the trust in there somewhere, even though they may be attacking each other. And I think that at this level, I don't think people really, I think it becomes so much more personalized. It's not the party, you know what I mean? You don't have the buffer of the party, you don't have the buffer of a number of people who are going to be also serving with you in the legislature. So it's a little more personal and we, we all, we benefit from it, and then we really, we, we really pay for it. And it's hard at this level.
It is. Your observation is really great. City Hall is where real change and progress can happen, and a reason is because you're not saddled, hopefully, with those kind of acrimonious relationships.
Right.
And, uh, but you're not doing it well if, if that's what defines your, your work as a council.
I mean, I'm, I'm proud of, to be honest with you, over the last two years, as much as we've struggled, we're not West Lynn and we're not Oregon City. Really. You know? I mean, they have really fought and fought, and it's been horrifying, you know? Just watching Mayor Wagner deconstruct in that executive session that the other councillors decided to daylight on their website, I mean, that's amazing to me that that's, that's where they got.
Yeah.
We've said things to each other in this, you know, this group. We, we've said things to each other, maybe online, maybe not online, but we certainly had, didn't use any of the language that they were using for that hour in that executive session.
A lesson learned there.
Yeah, it's crazy.
For sure. What are the rest of you think?
I think also, at this level, at least in my, my personal space, is that I have no desire to be a politician. There's nothing about me that wants to be a politician. When I get called a politician, it's like very shocking to me. That's not why I'm here. And so, yeah, my, my skin's pretty, pretty thin when it comes to that. I'm not used to having opinion pieces written about me, or people coming in, spending their three minutes of my swearing in to tell me how I'm, you know, I, I didn't win properly, whatever, whatever. It's very hard because that's not my regular life, you know what I mean? And so I think it's hard when, you know, you see stuff online, I mean, I've been called a racist, a, a cat hater, a bully, I mean, you know, a narcissistic puppet. It's very difficult. And I, I'd say most of us aren't politicians. Are you a politician?
I am not. Don't want to be here.
Right, exactly.
I just want to help the community. I don't want to be labeled a politician. I want to do the best idea, whatever's happening, like, you know, here's, here's another preconceived notion. If Mindy, Bill and Greg win, Tammy's got a voting block. Well, we had our thing, Mindy's a friend of mine, but guess what? Mindy wasn't the best choice for the council president. Matt has the experience and has done it before. Randy made that point, it was a good point. You just communicate with me and give me some knowledge and some, and some common sense, and I'm going to, I'm going to work with you, like the, the school board. Go in there and talk to the school people. I got things that can help you guys now, I'm just going to help the community. I'm not a politician, I'm just helping the community.
And no desire to be a politician.
Exactly.
And Bill would have helped the other side because he and I disagree ninety percent of the time. And we fight.
Yeah, so, yeah. Well, I mean.
You know what I heard from several of you is, I'm not having any fun.
Did you hear that from several people or not me? Just me?
Oh, no, several people. You, you were very clear about it, but others said the same thing because you expected this to be.
Enlightening.
More fun, joyous, and, and, and filling your cup. And it's not. And you talked about it, you're just afraid of what's going to happen when you go to a council meeting, you read that stuff. It's not fun, and your pay doesn't make it worth it, that's for sure. So there, you know, how are you going to make this fun for you?
More ribbon cutting.
Yeah, brass, brass plates, all kinds of stuff.
I think rilling in maybe your friends or, or neighbors or community members that, that know you well and you talk to them and, and maybe something gets mentioned in passing and they take it to the next extreme, and then that's where you see someone you know writing something about somebody on Nextdoor, and you're like, oh my gosh, you know what I mean? Social media is a huge problem to, to, to make your job, it makes your job so much harder. Because like Tracy, like I said, I don't, I have thicker skin because I don't, I don't really care what you think of me. I care what the people think, but I don't care what you think of, you know what I mean? So I can deal with that, but it does get nasty and like Matt said, it's on a, sometimes on a personal level. Okay, if, an environment where you, I think I told you this, an environment where you can't disagree is not an environment that's focused on growth, it's focused on control. And no one here, I don't think, wants to control anybody. I think we want to work together and get along, but when the personal aspect comes in it, you know? And I'm, I'm going to just put this out there so you know, John, I'm the worst at it. I used to go, I was led in the wrong direction. I, I used to go to this old city hall, sit down there, I'd put in my card and I'd save my three minutes a lot, because I thought I was helping and making a difference. Well, I realized I wasn't, and there's other ways to handle situations. And no personal attacks whatsoever, and I don't do that anymore. And I, you, you guys noticed during the election, I was not on Nextdoor, never made a comment never. That doesn't work. I know that now. I did know. You learn every day, you know what I mean? And I learned, I learned things.
Jackie suggested sometime back that I join Nextdoor Glass No.
Oh, don't do that.
That was part of the reason that I tripled my rates. Yeah.
No.
But it was very insightful and helpful coming into this. I think you all, you know, you're all saying the right stuff. And that's, the, the, these personal, acrimonious, hurtful things are not helping you have fun, meaning you're not, you're not achieving that which you want personally and helping your community do that. And I, I, you know, one of the things I, I thought about when you were saying that is that maybe you have a responsibility to stand up for each other, even in the public realm of saying, now wait a minute, I disagree with councillor, but that's okay. He has a right to say that, and, and I appreciate that, and we all, you know, what, what you're saying about him is just not true and not right, or something like that. You know, just, that's part of a team, is having each other's back. And I know that can be hard, but something to think about.
Well, Greg brought up a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as the new kid here, I keep going back to this proactively growing and supporting new leadership. You know, when I, when I decided to run, you know, I felt that there were voices in this community that were not being heard. And making that decision is not affordable, is scary, um, making that decision and making that jump. And for people who say they care about their community and their voices so much, I have never felt more unwelcome in my campaign whatsoever. And like Randy said, the articles are not like, oh, I'm going to support this person. It was like, you shouldn't support her because she's a Californian. You shouldn't support her because she threw a Black Lives Matter protest. So you have all these preconceived notions, as you said earlier, that's the position that I'm in. So I'm joining this group of people who, Tracy Todd and councillor Tracy are the only two that were very supportive, are saying, oh, who are you? Like, oh, nice to meet you, ahead of time. And so, for me coming into this, I have no trust because through the campaign season and then after the campaign season, it doesn't feel like my voice matters at all. Like I'm not welcome in this town, and then the people that voted for me are not welcome either. And I felt like I was totally caught between two sides, two like warring people from all sides. There's a ton of animosity and history in this town that I had no idea existed. And so I'm hearing from both sides of like, don't trust this person, don't do that person. I'm like, holy crap, I just wanted to like be a new person, a new voice. And so, I don't know how to work in an environment where I don't feel like someone's going to have my back i- in the field. Like I don't, I don't think that that's the case, that someone would come to my, my defense, even if they did disagree with me.
I'm just looking back at the list of loves here. And you've got a, something that, that's the antithesis of, of that, of course, and you brought it up as a character of the community. That's, that's a tough one.
The amount of conversations, like I, I, I prepared myself for like, oh, she doesn't have political experience and all of those things. But all of the conversations were just angry and negative about decisions that I have no control over from ten years ago, or five years ago, or twenty years ago. And so for me, I'm like, looking forward and wanting to move forward, but I do think that there is a lot of community issues out there that people are angry with previous decisions. And like I, I've been here for five years, I don't, I don't know what happened with the library, I don't know what happened with those things, you know?
I love the library.
But I mean, like that, like, for me, there's already, I feel like there's already this, this preconceived notion of who I am and what I stand for, and so I'm never given the benefit of the doubt. So, I think we need to work on supporting new leadership and proactively growing.
Yeah. I kind of heard that in some of the conversations.
Yeah. Just trust. I really think it's all comes down to trust at the end of the answer. The only way you earn trust is by continually being trustworthy and continually, you know, doing that stuff, and then that builds that integrity. Um, so, I guess, you know, you just decide, you start from today, and you, you move forward, and break the trust, then it's very clear. Or is it, you know what I mean? Like you, you either decide to move ahead and, and be that team, or you don't. Those are, those are our choices right there.
You think trust, obviously you do. It accrues both to the individual councillor and then also to the council as a whole.
Yeah.
Yeah. But how do you go about? And don't get me wrong, because I've been up there to say, somebody on the council has done something wrong. Clearly, I've been going to these meetings a long time. How do you go about when people are attacking people on the board, not for what they've done or haven't done, but for who they are? You know? And then where do you, where does, you know, you, we're not, you're not supposed to say anything, okay? So then we all sit there and somebody, you know, the first thing you hear is, why didn't you say something? Well, we're not supposed to.
Why aren't you supposed to?
Well, because I think it goes back to what Chad said. Kind of, um, what is that speech? Don't talk, just not, don't talk. Giving, giving it time to settle in and come back and really make an educated, um, uh, statement. Because I will be the first to admit I will open my mouth and insert my foot every time. Not every time, maybe seventy-one percent.
Then you get a, you get a pissy match during a city council meeting at the end. Well, it used to be in the beginning, which started the whole meeting off on the wrong foot.
Right.
So now it's at the end, so I guess it's maybe a little bit more palatable if we yell at each other at the end, but it's just.
Well, something everybody could do, it's hard to do. I, that's why I know I made mistakes and I don't get up and, wasn't speaking, I learned and figured out and reassessed myself. And it's a really hard thing to do. But what causes wars and divorces and everything? Pride. Swallow it once in a while. It's okay. You know what I mean? I can be wrong. I could, you know, and that's, and you got to do that, and you got to do that to have somebody's back. Like Tracy said, you got to just make up your mind now. You're going to trust me, I'm going to trust you until we prove otherwise. That's how it should be for our council, and it makes our community stronger and happier, and we go forward, you know?
The fundamental principle of leadership in the public realm is, is not have an ego.
That's right.
It's not about you.
It causes a lot of problems.
It's about those elected you and those who've served. Ego has no place. You all rise together. You get the accolades together. So, it's important to do that. Tammy, Madam Mayor, we haven't heard all that much from you. I know it's a.
It's a bad day.
Bad night, yeah.
Very distracted.
I know, I know. But any pearls of wisdom to?
No, like I say at the beginning of every meeting, is that we're there, we have to be defend, you know, take a path that's defensible, and we need to make decisions, putting our own personal agendas aside. We need to do what's right for the city.
Well, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I think you need to come to some understanding with each other of what you're going to do to change the behavior of, of your relationships. You know, I mean, how you manifest good government. And remember, it's, it's structure, it's, uh, structure actions and behavior, which is the hardest one. How are you going to change the behavior of the council, which means each of you individually? Can you come to some agreement tonight, or at least consensus, and then it'll flush out as we can help it flush out?
How about having more of these? I mean, tonight, I'll admit it, I'll admit it, when Matt first started, he worked for Metro, I, I was, didn't know, have any facts or anything, I was against that. I told you that, and then we worked it out, I let it go. I'll never, that doesn't come up, he does a great job for the city. I might have, probably did, and I apologize if I had a preconceived notion about you, but it was because I let outside influences tell me, and, and, and you listen to them because you're around them all the time.[1703.86] But I apologize, since I've talked to you and we went to the school thing, I, you care, I already see, I don't care. So, I can let all that go, I can do that, I can admit I'm wrong, and I can let it go, and I can go forward. And you can trust all of your back.
I think you're on the right path, Greg, I think you're for recognition. So one of the things you said a few minutes ago was that, with you and Mindy being on the ballot, that, you know, what was being said around the community was that the mayor had a voting block. Well, yes, and I said that. So what I did, though, was I didn't pay you respect, or you, Mindy, the respect of being individuals with your own brains, being able to think for yourself and make your own decisions on the city council. That's my bad, that's my mistake, right? I think a little mea culpa in this room isn't a bad idea, I appreciate yours. I did do that, and I say to both of you, my apologies, because it didn't give you credit for your independence, right? I mean, you're an independent thinker, you're an independent thinker. Who am I to say that the two of you are not independent thinkers, right? I think a little more of that in this community would help us all out, because I think that the leaders should be saying to each other, "We're here to lead, we're gonna be strong." Because if something does happen in this community, and we had to fire Mayor, you and I worked fine. And Counselor Hartman, when we had a whole bunch of people converging on our city, and we had to get food really quick, and Greg, you know, we all did that, we pulled together. If we can show the city that we're strong and united, it's gonna change a lot of their attitudes. And what changes attitudes is when somebody comes to me to talk about Greg Alexander, if I don't say, "Yeah, Greg's a real this or that," if I say, "Hey, he's great, Greg's learning, he's picking it up," you know, "How is Greg doing on council, or how's Mindy, they're picking it up, they're paying attention, they're really working, they're looking at policy, whatever." That's what I should be saying.
I think we all...
That's really what I should be saying, because there's no reason for me to say, "You're doing anything but, Greg," because I witnessed nothing but you do that, and Mindy's same thing. You know, you're learning, we're all learning, Vanessa's learning. So, I have no reason to say anything about that. Now, if there are actions that we're doing out in the public, where we're saying to people, and it comes back to us, and we constantly have to have this cycle, I think that's the problem we're having here. We've never told the community that we're strong and united, the community knows we're divided. Let's get to that other level.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, covered, I mean, it's even kinda what I said, of having each other's back. The ability to defend, defend that which people would expect you wouldn't.
Right.
I just love it when political figures such as yourself do something remarkable, unexpected, and wonderful. You know, where, wow, the citizens can get pretty excited about that. So if...
Can I ask a favor of everyone? If someone has something to say about me, or Tammy, or Greg, Tracy, on and on and on, I think the first question you should always ask that person is, "Have you had a conversation with that person?" Because if you've never talked to, if you know somebody that is talking crap about somebody else, and they've never met or had given five minutes to talk to that person, rather they've sat and manifested what they believe, and after thinking about it for weeks and months and days, 'cause they got nothing better to do, that is so the wrong approach. Because I've had people say things to me about different people on the council, and again, I say, and I know I've said this to many people, he's, Matt's a smart guy. Man, if you wanna know about a lot of things about the infrastructure of the city, he is your go-to guy. And if you, if there's somebody in this city that you've heard their name, and you don't know who they are, ask YouTube, because you know everybody, you know, and now Greg too. But again, I just ask that simple thing, have you asked that person? I think that would go a long ways, you know?
I'd follow it up with, "What's your motivation to come through..."
Yeah, what's the intent?
"...Counselor Gerlinton under the bus with me in conversation?" Because it could be completely off-topic and have nothing to do with me, or you, or really that person, right?
Right, absolutely. Are you trying to gain sides, 'cause...
What's, right.
It's not like I'm gonna invite you over for dinner, and Greg's not gonna invite you over for dinner. So I'm not sure why you wanna be our best friend, you know?
Yeah, but being friends is a lot more fun.
It is, it is a lot more fun. But just, I think that that would be a really good thing to do, is direct people to that person for a conversation, rather than engage in a bitch session with somebody, I don't know how it's...
Other thoughts about it?
Okay, I apologize.
No, please don't.
Maybe it's perfect.
Very insightful and meaningful. Other thoughts? It sounds like, you know, mea culpa all around to some degree. And hopefully, some sense that the greater good of the community is served by a change in behavior. And let's just talk about it. What specifically are those changes you think is a group you need to do? Some ideas have come up, anything, I mean, you know, no personal shots at council, no personal shots anywhere. Encourage people to get facts, talk to the people. You and I had a conversation today, and it was like, wow, you know, once you understood something, it completely changed your perspective of everything. And you were happy to admit that, not admit it, but just acknowledge it. And it changed, I mean, that was just really a breath of fresh air, to see that happen. Wow, and what we have here is a failure to communicate, which is a very easy thing to say. But what's more important about that is, if it's a failure to communicate, getting back to, why is there a failure to communicate? Why does this exist? And, you know, we know there's differing positions and values amongst you that leads to this barrier, instead of an agreement and a willingness to cross the barrier. What specifically more might you want to agree to do?
Stay off social media?
Well, that's not gonna happen. But it's not gonna happen.
I haven't been on social media for, since I became a counselor.
I haven't either, I completely stepped down.
I don't have Facebook, I don't have nothing.
But that's not gonna, that's not where we are in society.
Yeah, no.
And for me...
Well, but you ran for a position to ensure the deliverability and longevity of Gladstone, not to get in a little character debate because you disagree with somebody. The social drama is absolutely out of control now.
I use social media for...
That's all I do.
Acceptability and information...
That's right, puppies are...
I don't get on Nextdoor, that's not...
I suggest nobody...
You're supposed to stop pushing your drama.
Well, what if you use social media...
Absolutely.
What if you use social media as a platform to do what you were just talking about? That is to say, wait a minute, call Greg, here's his phone number, don't do that. Call Greg, let me tell you what the real facts are, he's not the scumbag you're saying he is, I promise, or something. You know, have each other's back, defend, which means you're defending the honor of City Hall by doing that. And that's what's most important. How do you defend the honor at this place?
Well, I'm, everybody knows I'm a bleeding heart liberal tree hugger, you know, that's sort of who I am. But I remember seeing, you know, McCain have somebody saying how, when he was, you know, running for election, and that Obama was a Muslim, not born in the country, whatever. And he stopped that woman who supported him wholeheartedly in front of this entire convention center, and said, "He and I disagree on policy, but he's a wonderful person, he's a, he is not incorrected." And that really could have been something that been in the butt, but for me, it was one of the most enduring things ever. And I think we should just try and do that a little bit more, you know what I mean?
Aide as a team.
Wait, we might disagree on this policy, but, but we never really disagree on policy, that's the thing. I mean, like, I mean, we all...
All the time you're wasting.
Yeah.
All the goodwill you're wasting.
We get things done.
We do, I mean, the rate increase, oh my gosh.
Boom, boom, boom. Oh, don't go there, 'cause I still holding y'all...
Well, I like go to my toilet swash, but that's, you know, the thing. But, but the thing is, because we were on board, we've been educated in it, we've had tons of research, you know, from staff, there's just, there was so much behind that. And it isn't just us going, "Oh yeah, let's vote for that." It's because of all the work that staff's put in on this for, well, I mean, well over two years, but two years I've been here. We don't ever really disagree on that stuff. I don't think we really disagree on most anything, except for the personal E. And that's, that's, we just need to just say today's...
My go-to, when people come up and start saying something to me about another counselor, and I've been doing this, and it's great, I just go, "Well, here's the deal, here's the problem I have with that. They live in the same city you do, and they're volunteering. So, if you've got anything else to say about that, you tell them about it, I don't wanna hear it." Because they're given their time, they're volunteering, and they live right here. So if they wanna do this, if we voted on it, it's to better Gladstone, it's not to better them individually, or they're trying to punish you or nothing, it's they volunteer, and they live in the city themselves, so let it go. You know, that's what I, that was my go-to.
Yeah, he's gonna get my mail half the time anyway. So I have to be nice to him.
Yeah, so it sounds like what you're trying to do, in a sense, is, you know, not play into it and help put a lid on it in the community. You yourself don't play into it, and...
Not anymore, I'm gonna be the first to admit, I did, I used to, but I've seen the way, now I don't do it.
And for disclaimer, full disclosure, I can't put a lid on my sister, I can't. She is a female version of the Proud Boys. Seriously, this is my sister.
I understand that, I think we don't talk very often, she's... Right, it would've went miles if you picked up the phone and called me and said that you don't feel that way. And when citizens, including myself, come onto our meeting and ask about it, and ask, "Does the council support this?", and no one says anything, I mean, the silence is totally complicit.
But I would've liked something that, no, you're not a white supremacist like everybody's calling you on Facebook, you're not a KKK member, you're not mentally unstable, and there was things that were being said about me too.
I apologize, I apologize for that, I don't believe that, I didn't see most of those.
What you told me is that you tried to reach out to Tammy.
No, I publicly on our meeting asked about it.
Yeah.
Well, that's not bad.
Several other citizens asked about it.
Well, it might've been, okay, you should have called her, you should've answered the phone, and you could've affirmed your position to her, and, you know, I mean, it's just dumb.
Their relationship didn't exist.
No, it didn't, I was a new person in this town.
But I, I can't...
I don't think anybody wants you to apologize for your sister, anybody who knows my sister, I mean, dear...
That's not true, that's not true. That is exactly what I heard people, that Tammy needed to apologize for her sister's behavior. And I felt like she was attacked so bad for the actions of somebody else in her house.
Not even my house.
Which is the same thing that you have felt with Candy. So you have to empathize with her somewhat, because you've said on occasion, "I have no control over that situation, and she has no control over that situation." And so I think, understanding where the other person is coming from, and again, picking up a telephone and having a conversation, rather than...
Yep, I'm not a, I'm not a Liberty Lady, is what they're called. I'm not, I'm the Disney Party, I belong to the Disney Party. I vote for Mickey Mouse every presidential election, so that's where my mind's at.
Yeah, you know, but the thing, though, I mean, it's great, I love just saying, "Wait, no, I didn't say that, talk to her, I don't think it did." But then also, because you're public figures, there is maybe some responsibility to counter it. And to say, "I don't support that position at all, this is what I think," as well as distancing yourself from that other party. Because the public needs to hear those kind of things from you, that maybe they don't need to hear from the person on the street so much. You taking positions is very influential on people. And especially when there's something really negative that's being said about you. And being able to shut that down can be very, very powerful and important.
And I just need everyone to understand that being called a terrorist cell leader of Black Lives Matter in this town required me to spend a ton of money to get security cameras. People were driving up and down my street, stopping in front of my house, my car was keyed, like...
Yeah, it was scary, and I think because we're not, I'm not a person of color, and I'm not indigenous, I'm not... That is, I always felt bad that I didn't understand it as much at first, because it took me a minute, and I'm really sorry about that. That must've been very, very frightening, two little kids at home. You know, it's getting spread, I saw the, that whole thing got spread to Texas, it got spread to different states. And it was very frightening. And so, we've been in very heightened, very scary times. And I just, I really wanna apologize to you for that.
Thank you.
I actually told you, I said, I actually told you, didn't I, that I said, "I'm surprised you're still running and actually haven't put..."
I literally contemplated pulling out, because I said, "This is bullshit, excuse me." I'm here to represent a certain amount of people that I thought I was doing the right thing, and then here...
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it takes one pile of Rittenhouse, you know what I mean?
Look at that, having each other's back, right?
And it's never all right, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying I'm anybody special, but if I would've known that, I would've, I'm up late, I would've kept an eye out. I would've caught him, I would've taken care of it.
He's got all the security cameras.
And not only that, I know what's going, well, you watch, you check the security cameras just the other night, kids on bicycles are coming up and checking on your door handles. That's crazy, you know, I mean...
Well, I'm sorry that you had to, I'm sorry that you felt like that, I, I, fear is never, ever anything, there's nothing ever good that comes of fear, and I'm not saying, calling, you know, the feeling has got to be horrific. And as a mother, that would be my first concern, and I can tell that that was yours. And I am heartfully sorry that you ever had to feel that.
Thank you.
And nobody should ever invade your face, that's totally wrong, all the time, anytime. And you do have two beautiful daughters, you know, my girlfriend still talks about them, you know, how are the little girls? I said, "They're doing fine, I don't know, I don't, I tell her, I don't know, I don't see them." I said, "I don't think they're in school though, because our schools aren't open."
No, they're certainly not.
Opportunities like that don't come up very often, I mean, I'm just thinking, wouldn't it have been great if the whole council or somebody, you know, went down and stood on the lawn showing a, in a sense, almost a bipartisan support or something? Because it was during the campaign, so I could have... You know, that's part of the team, again, having each other's back and standing up, showing that the disagreements between you is nothing compared to the partnership of you for yourself and your love for your community. I'm gonna say, this bullshit has no place in Gladstone.
Like shaking the fist, you know?
Oh, it's not the same.
But, I mean, that's part of, I mean, part of what we're tasked with, is to really build that credibility back with the community. To show the, and you know, the cynicism too, that we're up against a lot of times, you know, in this community and other communities. I think we're all kinda transitioning through a different political mindset. But, you know, the cynicism is there, and it's palpable. You know, we should be able to present the council to the community and say, "Yeah, you know, we're able to work together, and we're not gonna always agree, and we're not gonna necessarily be social friends or what have you, but we've worked together as a team. We're gonna have to do that, and we're gonna have to be emphatic enough that it actually drives away from some of the cynicism, because I think the cynicism is pretty strong in this community." I mean, if you go back to, just looking back at the last, the last four years, I've been here five years. The first year and a half that I lived here, I was really going, "Wow, I could've..." I own property in Oregon City, I could've moved to Oregon City, it's only one more mile. I mean, it really was, it was nutty, you know? You had, you had two counselors being recalled, Greg was the chief petitioner for the recall.
We had a mayor for seven months.
Yes, mayor for seven months.
I did tell Bill.
I came to a city council meeting and saw an as-to-be-named city administrator or manager, and I was just like, "Oh, no, this is not gonna be good." I mean, just watching him, this, this person...
Yeah, don't say the name.
I won't. This person, and how they reacted with staff and the citizens, I was just like, "What town did I land in?" I mean, I know now, I'm gonna start doing my due diligence on the city government, because it was real rough. But, you know, and I'm gonna give you credit, Mayor, I'm not, to the mayor's credit, you know, we went through some pretty hard stuff. I think the one thing was, as soon as I got on council, we found out that somebody was developing a wetland, and that shouldn't be happening, right? We were pretty much lockstep in that, you know? So I've seen some really positive things, now what we have to do though...
Getting rid of said, not unnamed city administrator.
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't have happened had it not been a premium...
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to try to sell ourselves pretty hard to the community to really get over that challenge of the cynicism too. And I think, the only way we're gonna be able to do that is to be genuine ourselves. I just, I really believe so.
I think yourselves and corporately as a team.
Right, and as a team.
Wow. You know, it seems to me, you have the opportunity to have a relatively clean slate, if you're willing to use it that way, dig out of the hole, we'll see. Maybe one of the things that you wanna talk about for strategy tomorrow is how do you, or to agree to take some deliberate time to learn, and to figure out how to better present yourselves to the community, how to tell a story, how to, how to move it forward. And it's not just a communication strategy, it's more like a, I don't know, social branding, I don't know. But it's just something to build credibility, what was some strategy for how you build credibility? There's a, I'll just share this real quickly. Anyone know the book or the work of Steve Barber, he's a leadership guru person, who I happen to really, really like? Because I've taken a lot of his work, and I applied it in the public sector, and I've worked with Steve on a lot of stuff. He's still totally focused on corporate, so I take it off and try to amend it. But he has this, his first book was called Radical Leap. Leap's an acronym, and it's the heart of this book. And I think it speaks to exactly what you're talking about, so let me just share this real quickly. Acronyms, so L stands for what?
Lead.
No!
Leadership.
No!
Love.
Bingo! How'd you know that?
Because it always does.
And you know what that is, is his...
I'm in the wrong class.
I thought it was an ad.
We don't talk about that here, right? You talked about it right here. And not only here, but you're all thinking about the future too. And I believe that every one of you love a future that you see for this community. And I believe that every one of you love a future that you see for this community. You love that future. That's why you're on council. And you're optimistic and you're hopeful and you're gonna work for it. So that love, that capability to understand it, and not only that, but to create it in those around you, you know, of, of those people you serve, uh, to inspire, inspire love amongst others because you're clear in your values and in your work together and what you're trying to do and, and, and sharing a vision and, and a bunch of objectives or whatever that you want to achieve with love, meaning you're passionate, you're caring, and you're, you're, you're putting yourselves on the line for it. That, that's love. And then E is what?
I, I want for one. I don't wanna excitement, ecstasy.
It's easy, energy. And you know, what, what that means is you take a lot of love and all this gooood stuff. Well, man, there's energy in that. And, and you could become infectious. Imagine, you know, the seven of you all out there together groundbreaking and hugging each other on that new park or whatever it is. I mean, that's kind of infectious. Yeah, socially distanced. Yeah, groundbreaking by Zoom. You're all gonna be separate parts of the park and, you know. But the idea is, is the love generates energy and that's important. And then, and then you as leaders capture that. And then A is...
You'll never get it.
Animosity.
That's it. Brilliant.
Anger.
Anger. It's a word I used a little earlier this evening. It's audacity. And, uh, you know, what, what that is by definition is a bold and blatant disregard for convention, which means, we're not talking audacity in the sense of breaking the law. We're talking audacity in trying new stuff, thinking of it, saying, man, we could do that. Let's try that. Or whatever it is, let, let, let's go beyond the norm, beyond the convention. Let's say, boy, we can do anything any of those towns around us can and 10 times better. I mean, just, just audaciousness.
Like our contracting model for this building.
Look at the, look what you've done in the last two years for capital construction with no debt. Holy smokes. I mean, there's a story in that right there. Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. So that's, you know, that, that's just incredible. And, and it was audacious to do that. You know, I'm hearing tonight a whole bunch of audacious thoughts about transformation and change and moving forward and, ah, don't let go of it. But P gets back to what you said. P is really important, and maybe this kind of gets to what I was saying a moment ago. And P is proof. And what that means is proving to those you're leading, who believe in you, who voted for you, that you're making stuff happen, that what you promise you're delivering, that, that, um, y, y, you have a path forward as a team and you're going somewhere and you've got each other's back and you're providing proof that the community can see that stuff is doing well, that their investment in you of their goodwill is paying off. I mean, you can do all these wonderful things you talked about and not tell anybody and hope they notice. But I'm gonna suggest that perhaps you need to goose that a little bit and provide more deliberate proof on this. Also, there's one other, there are two other groups to which proof has to be provided. Not groups, two other entities that you need to be providing proof to that it's all working. And one of them is the city council. You. I mean, all this good thought and everything tonight, or is it all unicorns or is it real? And I think it's critical, you think about, how are we going to prove to ourselves that we're honoring our commitments and moving forward? And that, that gets, maybe that gets back to getting together three times a year, having a good conversation. And the other person that you have to prove it all to is yourself. In that, all this stuff, all, all that I hear is, it's not any fun anymore. Oh, I thought it'd be more fun. Well, to be able to say, I am having fun because these are great people and it's great staff and we've got great stuff we're doing and the public's happy and we're moving forward and, boy, that is fun. So proof in all of this is really important, that, that, it's just not empty. It's, it's stuff that you actually prove to yourself as well as others at the same time, that it's worth it. You're talking about changes in behavior tonight. That's tough. You talked about ways to change. Great. Don't let go of that. Be, be ready to provide proof to yourself and to each other that you actually are sticking with it and that it's working. Totally surprised the citizens of Gladstone with them going, wow, what's going on? They're all working together, you know? Wouldn't that be amazing? So, uh, sorry, little lecture, but you love it here. There's no doubt about it. I mean, just conversations with each one of you, uh, have, you're committed and that, that is terrific. And you've identified an issue which is stopping you from fulfilling your potential, which are these worthless little relationship problems. And I've heard you commit to a great degree that you're just not gonna do that anymore. That is a behavior that's gonna stop. And instead, you're gonna hold each other up and move forward. I'm exhausted. So please, follow on. I, go, go, go.
There's gonna be a lot of changes. There's gonna be a lot of stuff. There's ways that things have been doing, been going for years. I mean, we had the same mayor for 36 years and I think that's why we're, it's been in all this sort of turmoil is that change is uncomfortable, right? Um, I know Anessa's, um, you know, people that really wanted her to run, who, you know, a great group of people. They, there's gonna be some changes and we have to be open to that and even understand that change is always uncomfortable. But we have to be okay with that change. That doesn't mean things are going bad. There might be ideas that come to the table that have never been brought to the table before, but that's good. You know what I mean? I think we all have incredible strength and that's what's needing to happen. So just even though maybe we don't feel so like, well, that's really uncomfortable, means that we're back, backpedaling. The only way we'd be backpedaling is if we weren't supportive of each other, weren't engaged with each other, didn't trust each other. I mean, that's what, I just think, well, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if I can ask you how old you are, but I know that you're basically my daughter's age, right? And...
I'm 32 and proud.
Okay, yeah, so she's like my daughter's age, right? And so I think that that's great. I think that, so it's, so there's gonna be ways that things are different than we've always done it. And just know that it's okay to feel uncomfortable at times, but it's not bad.
Good point, yeah. It's a bit comfortable, comfortable, but it's not a bad.
It's not a bad thing and...
I would like to assume, and I'll go out on a little bit of a limb here, just based off on the 50 or so phone calls that I've had since January 4th, that there are going to be a group of new voices that feel comfortable and that I'm approachable because I'm not, you know, born and raised here. And I'm always gonna be someone that writes notes, as you guys saw with the school board, and write those notes and send them to Jackie. And I just want you all to know that, you know, like I'm not gonna keep anything. I, I, if I don't write it down and send it out, like, it's not gonna happen. Like, it just is how my brain works. But I, to your point, you know, there might be some uncomfortable things that come up that when I give out the notes, not necessarily my opinion, it's just relaying the information of like, here's what someone is saying. What can we do about this? You know, I don't know the answer, so how do I approach this, you know? And that's like what this today was with asking why this wasn't on Zoom. I get 10 phone calls or messages asking, why isn't it on Zoom? And all the other city council meetings have been on Zoom. And I'm like, I don't know. Let me find out. And so immediately, as soon as I got those messages at 8:30 last night, sorry for bugging you. And so that, you know, just to your point, uh, I guess I just don't wanna be viewed as like, oh, here's Anessa's email again. She's bringing something up. It's just how I communicate and that's just, you know, I'd rather be over communicative than think, have you guys think I'm holding.
But you're asking the question. So I, I, you're abs, fair, completely fair. That's what everybody would like, you know, to be open and honest about it and not go to one person and say, well, clearly nobody else is going to be open to this, but I want you to know what I'm thinking. That's totally the wrong approach. So in my opinion, you're doing it the right way. Because like I threw off a question to Jackie yesterday, I don't know and I don't wanna answer it wrong. Here, I'll let you.
Yeah.
You know, so...
And you're learning protocol, uh, by asking for that amendment, amendment or addition to the agenda.
Yeah.
And Tammy talked about the council rule and, and you, you got it. And yet she was gracious enough to allow it to come on the agenda. But now you know that those, those things get put on in advance.
Well, but that's, but John, I gotta interrupt you on that one. Because honestly, there was not consistency of that policy over the last couple of meetings. And so I think that's part of like, um, it's, to me, it's kind of moving the goalposts. If that's really the policy, if that's how we're gonna operate from the rules of the council, it has to be consistent from member to member. And it wasn't consistent from member to member. So I don't know that, I mean, I think that you're right. It's the protocol. But if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be the way that it's, then, then that's the governance, then we need to govern by the council rules.
What else was added to the agenda at the last minute?
Neil Reisner brought in a couple of things at the last minute.
Didn't he? I just...
He didn't have a week's notice prior to that resolution, Mayor.
What?
He, it wasn't a week's notice prior to him bringing that.
It was in the council packet, wasn't it?
I don't think it was in the council packet because it was just like a paragraph this long. So, I mean, if it was in the council packet, it wasn't, it wasn't the full resolution.
You think it was nefarious?
I don't think it was nefarious. Am I the only one that remembers this that way?
Um, I don't remember how it came about. I just remember that it was shocking because I had brought up the proclamation condemning racism in June or July.
Yeah.
And it took a long time before it, it, it got on. And so that's why when his was like on, I thought maybe it's because he was, it was like his last, you know, he's, his last meeting, you know what I mean, that it went that fast. But I think let's just stick by the rules and we should all be good, you know?
Yeah, I doubt it was nefarious, so.
And what is the council rule?
I'm sorry.
A week in advance so that it gets on the, in the packet.
It's in here.
Oh, okay. But not everything gets on there, right? It's not just one council.
Go back and read those council rules.
I need to see them.
You know, and, and a lot of councils don't have rules and yous are quite, quite expensive.
Right, so for agenda adjustments though, I mean, you have the council rules, you have a week to bring your agenda item and then you ask for agenda adjustments at the council.
That's what I was gonna say. On the agenda, it says additions or amendments to the agenda.
Right.
And that is what Anessa was trying to say.
Right.
It was the appropriate time for her to say, I want to add something to the agenda.
Right.
Or she could do under business from the council.
Right, right. Yeah. I get, well, and I guess in that instance, when something doesn't happen with a week's notice, you know, maybe it would have been better to do business from the council, but when we don't get the packet in a week's notice or there's something that happens like that happens, then, then what's the protocol?
Well, the, the thing for me is we need to make informed decisions. And if there's an action item, then we need advance, we need the information to make an informed decision. So we need to have as much information as we can in the packet. If there's an action item.
Right, right. So I guess when I, if I talk to Jackie and that's, I have the options to choose, it would be better, it would have been better to email Jackie saying, this is what I wanna do, and then she would send it out to everybody? And this is like, and this is why I feel like we need to do this?
I don't think you were asking for action though. I think you were just wanting to talk about insurrection and the security plan for the night.
And signing on a letter.
So a question, would that not have been appropriate to bring under council comments, counselor comments at the end of the meeting? Instead of an agenda item?
I think there was just some confusion about whether there was a request for action to be taken or a request for information. And I think there's a big difference there because the request for information is something that happens at every council meeting during council comments.
Right.
Um, a request for action is something that usually needs the advanced notice.
Yeah.
What I will say is that council rules, rules and procedure, all those kinds of things are in place to run an orderly meeting so people have the time and, and things are fair and it doesn't seem like someone's getting preferential treatment over another. But the council acts as a body. And one way to sort of resolve these kinds of situations, instead of saying, I'd like to put this on the agenda and putting the onus on the mayor to say yes or no, is that you take a council vote. And if a majority of the council says, yes, we think this is important and we should address this tonight, then the council has spoken and the, the rules of procedure or whatever else should not thwart the will of what the council as a body wants to do. The council as a body says, you know, that's really important. We agree with you, but we need more time and more information. Let's put it over to next week or next meeting or let's have a special meeting, you know, then the council as a body can decide that. And it's just, it's not necessarily fair to put that onus on whether it's the council president or the mayor, whoever's running the meeting, to make that decision because then it's, it's very political in nature. So that's a way you can get around it. And we can, if it's not in there already, we can add language if, if you're really worried about procedure to allow for a suspension of the rules. So you could take a vote to suspend the rules and then a vote to put it on the calendar. If you really wanna like follow the US Senate model, you could do that. But I think at the local level, for the most part, when the council as a body wants to act, you shouldn't let these rules dictate what you're going to do. You should allow the council as a body to vote on it, discuss it and move forward.
So procedurally, Chad, are you just basically making a motion to amend the agenda at that point and then you explain the, the motion? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, and you'd make a motion and then if there's a second, then you have the discussion and debate and then you vote on it or someone makes a friendly amendment to the motion to say, how about we put it on the next agenda? I mean, you would do it that way, but, but it also goes back to my point when I was talking about the city attorney's office. Advanced notice of that kind of stuff is really helpful. It's helpful for the person running the meeting. It's helpful to staff because there may be information that staff wants to share with you. There may be a reason why it doesn't make sense from staff's perspective for you guys to vote on that and it'd be helpful for staff to be able to tell you. And, and it may be helpful, as Anessa was saying before, that, you know, maybe Jackie gets the information and says, okay, there's gonna be a vote on whether to take action on this tonight, but if I get that information out two days before the meeting, maybe someone's gonna have a chance to look at it and read it and, and understand it beforehand. So...
And we allow community citizen participation. And it's not fair to put something on the agenda that does not give them the opportunity to, to be involved, especially when they have to give us notice by noon that day they're planning on speaking that night.
My only issue was, I was on the Zoom already and I'm sitting there and then you added it. I knew nothing about it. I didn't know what. I've turned off all news. I've not watched. Nope, news, not even a lot of news. I'm tired of it. So I just turned it all off. So I didn't even know anything was going on. And then I looked at it and I was like, okay, so for me to have made any kind of decision that night without knowing what that was about, I, that's why I said, I don't know, have enough information.
See, that, that's the teamwork piece. What, Jackie, when, when do you publish the agenda and make it available?
A week ahead of time.
A week ahead of time. So something to be added, I, it sounds like there's probably a consensus that it's okay to add something if the council votes affirmatively for that by suspending the rules or it gets written into the rules. But that should be a really, really rare occasion.
Yeah.
And it would only be, it would only be if there was something really urgent, perhaps.
Was it a policy action? I don't remember.
Yeah, she wanted us to sign the letter.
Oh, well, there was no letter. It was more of seeing other cities and communities come together from the city standpoint, saying that we're here and we're, you know, we, yeah, and, and why we haven't done that.
Yeah, and not pushing it out another month since it had just happened on that Wednesday and...
Right, right.
Probably appropriate to bring it up, just probably the wrong slot on you.
The business from the council.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question? Would it have been acceptable for Anessa to send out a letter to the council and at the top, remember, do not hit reply because this can't be a meeting, but I'm gonna bring this up tonight?
She would need to put it through Jackie.
Okay, but that...
Achieve the same results, but keep your nose clean.
Right, and, and I only say that because I was a little bit like Greg and I was thinking, okay, so I must have missed the news this morning because I woke up late for work and, you know, and, and didn't, didn't really have a clear understanding of what was going on, so...
Yeah, and again, one of those things, like, I have people reaching out to me saying, why hasn't the city of Gladstone made a statement yet about this? And so that, you know, that's where it kind of came from.
Right.
And, you know, as I'm learning.
No, I, that's why I'm asking. So how, okay, so then we're supposed to send a note to you and then you would send it back out to everybody?
And reply.
And say, so only reply to me.
Yeah, I don't think you ever reply all.
I'm not gonna.
So Jackie and I set the agenda the Monday before the council meeting. That's when we have our meeting and we set the agenda so that it gives staff time to pull all of the documents together to support the agenda. I mean, it takes time. Not the Monday before.
Monday prior.
Yeah, the Monday before, yeah. Because, I mean, we are very short-staffed and it, they need time to pull it together. You guys see, I mean, they're this thick. It, it takes time.
And I just wanna say something Anessa touched on and, and like Matt, you said too, you guys have only been here like five years. So I, I just wanna offer up anything you wanna know. I'm sure Tracy will help you. I'll tell you, you know what I mean? I've seen, seen a lot of stuff, so if you...
We're talking about the library, Greg.
Oh, are they still putting that up in that Webster Road property?
Right. Somebody, what's that new building down at the end of Portland Avenue? I'm like, the Civic Center?
Did you see that abandoned? Did you see that abandoned building on, on your avenue?
Now, we got good things happening too, like, uh, that Happies, Mark and Leah are making it, well, I accidentally stopped in one day.
Accidentally on purpose.
And they gave me, they said, oh, we just fired up our grill, you wanna try one of these Western bacon cheeseburgers? I said, do I? Best burger I've ever eaten, my daughter and I split it, and I can't wait for them to open it, it's not that long time. Are you open yet, are you opening up? That's gonna be a, make a big difference.
Oh, it is, yeah.
In our community.
Yeah, Mark and Leah, they are.
Even they'll cater the next council dinner.
Oh, they, you'd want them to after you eat that burger.
Tammy, you liked that lady, she was down there with us, one of the.
Oh, I've met her.
The power guns, doing all the workout.
Mark, Mark and Leah are both contractors, and they've been like, like, the Gaines couple or sort of, of.
Oh, they, they work hard.
They've done our work for years, and that's how we met them, and so I'm less like, I wanna gate build. They don't wanna build the gate now, oh my gosh.
Yeah, they painted for our customer, so it was like, they're, they're great people, and to open that, that's a lot of work and money to add to our community, you know?
They've been working for, for five months.
And during COVID, that's just so hard to even try to, to start an adventure like that, you know?
I know, if you make it in COVID.
We'll support them, I'm sure we'll all support them.
Greg will.
I will after.
I'll make a point of coming up for a burger. You'll, you'll.
Happy you did, oh.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I just have to congratulate you on the conversation you had. Um, I, I think you opened your hearts and opened your ears, and, you know, just kinda sorted some stuff out, and I hope you can stick with it. I, I, I do suggest that perhaps tomorrow there could be some agreement on how to figure out how to do this proof thing, basically, to the community and to yourselves, which might be a commitment to getting back together as a group.
You have, that, that's, well, and there's only one other thing, I'll give you a letter now, that's the only way this is all gonna work.
Yeah?
Starts with an H.
Help?
Honesty.
There you go. There you go, honesty.
We have to be honest with each other to make this work and, and, and stick together, you know what I mean?
And, and to that degree, I hope you'll call each other out if it isn't honest, but don't do it on camera.
Not at the meeting, not at the meeting.
Call each other up.
Yeah, call each other out, well said, well said. Well, we said we'd be done about by, by eight tonight, and I don't know what more there is for us to talk about.
Well, Randy said we could walk to it, so.
And Chad's buying, so.
You find a place open, I will buy.
They're open, they're open.
I will say that John facilitated the department heads retreat in December. You have an amazing team. They will be set up in the community room tomorrow on a monitor. They can see in this room, because of COVID, I can't get everybody in here. We're excited to present to you what we've accomplished and where our path is going. This was so important because we can't keep doing what we're doing unless we have the support and the continuity from all of you. And so I appreciate your guys' willingness to be honest and be humble. But we have to take care of each other if we're gonna continue on this path, and I'll tell you what, Gladstone has made some wonderful strides, and we're really excited to be able to tell you about it tomorrow. So, thank you guys all very much.
Well, thank you for seeing Gladstone through some issues.
Yes, what you have.
Kudos to you.
You reminded me, we did an instrument with the department heads, strengths-based leadership, which I think was really insightful for them. You had brought up the idea of like doing a DISC assessment with the council, something to think about. I'm not saying thumbs up, thumbs down right now, but sometimes doing some kind of instrument is, is kinda revealing, and you learn more about each other and more as a team, perhaps, so just something to think about if you wanna do something like that.
Isn't that what we did with LB Day? Something like that, yeah, one of them.
Yep.
LB Day? He died twenty years ago. Oh, okay!
This is where you will be sitting tomorrow, so you're welcome to leave anything, you can take your glad bags, so, um, so nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Yep, and you're gonna have some breakfast-type food.
We will have breakfast-type food.
Tamaise.
I think scones, coffee, and then lunch coming in, so.
And I am thinking there's a pretty good chance if we could just get along like we did today, that we'll be out by mid-afternoon. I hope.